...of December 8th, 2015 to order. Present is Mr. Mark Patton, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself Philip Dwyer, Mr. Anthony Calabrese, Ms. Trisha Pitko, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Cunelli, Mr. John Llewellyn. We do expect the other two board members, they're at a school event and will be here when that event finishes. If I could have you all rise with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have an important agenda item to talk about and that's our projections for next year's health insurance and so I'm glad that all of you came out for that item. I guess not. We do have a presentation that we very much enjoy having on our agenda from time to time and that is recognizing the achievements of our students and I'll ask Dr. Tidal to lead us through that.
Yes, and we have one addition to this, I'm happy to announce, that we have award athlete to recognize. So we'll start with the folks that are listed on the agenda, then we'll have Mr. Fry come up to acknowledge our state champion from Ward. So right now I'd like to have Mr. Hatsis and Mr. Schultz come up and the first group we're going to honor is a group near and dear to my heart as I've watched many of their games this year and lived and died with this team. The girls Class Double L volleyball team state championships from Ludlow High School.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. And Dr. Tidal, thank you very much. It's my honor and pleasure to be here today. Our team this year, in a quick word about them was, last year we went to the state semifinals in the FCAC championship game and we graduated all but one starter. And I told everyone, well, it'll be a rebuilding year this year and, you know, we won't have to expect too much of them. Well, obviously, we're standing here with a different finish. I'm very proud of our girls and I'd like to have our Coach Skelton here who's going to introduce our girls and congratulations on your accomplishment this year, Coach.
I don't think you need to push to the button, just speak into it.
Okay, just go to speak into it, thank you. Thanks for having us. We're thrilled to be here and we really appreciate all the support Dr. Tidal has shown us over the years, not just this year. So, thank you. I'll introduce the girls as we go down the line. Nini Capellas, Erin Rosengren, Olivia Albenzi, Amanda Schramm, Kate Lawler, Kate Steensma, Talis Montanaro, Abby Constantino, Zoe Holdred, Emily, our lovely manager who's just the rock of our team, but I want to make sure that everyone knows that, Isabel Andrews, Alice Nelson, you guys can't see past Dave, okay, Alex McKinnon, Kylie McCaffrey, Julian Quinn, and Julia Wilson.
Thank you so much. So we want you to hang around and when we finish all of the ceremonies, we want to have a photo op with all of the champions with myself and any board members that want to join the photo op.
And do know that you are on tape. And we save these tapes for a long time.
Right, right.
So stay smiling.
Right. I will say that watching these girls play over this year was an absolute delight and they just sort of got me in as a fan about halfway through the season. I just couldn't let go. Every time I had a free night if there was a volleyball game, I had to go to it. And this is a team that not only won the state championship, won the FCAC championship, but beat Darien High School twice in the same year. And to put that in perspective, as I understand it, the Darien High School record leading into this year was something on the order of 500 wins and 12 losses. So it's a remarkable accomplishment that these girls were able to get and it's a tribute not only to them and their hard work, but also the outstanding coaching that is only visible when you watch it a lot. Megan did an unbelievable job. She's like the Bill Belichick of volleyball coaches. In-game adjustments, it's incredible. So congratulations, everybody.
Thank you.
Sarah, come on up, please. We also have a state champion in our girls swim program. Sarah Granald is a sophomore here at Fairfield Ludlow High School, won the 50 and the 500 at the FCAC meet, went on to the state class meet, once again won the 50 and the 500, and then went to the state open and continued with a 50 and 500 sweep. Quite an accomplishment. You don't normally see the 50 combined with the 500. Most of your 50 swimmers will swim the 100 next, but to combine those two different types of swim races is quite an accomplishment. And Sarah, congratulations. And the best part is we have two more years with her.
Oh, feel free. Go ahead, Sarah. Sit right here.
You're used to this.
And we would offer the same to the girls team, but we'd be here till midnight.
Well, I was thinking about what to say and what I would like to tell all of you is that swimming is often seen as a solitary sport and it may seem like that when the water's rushing around you and you can't hear anybody speaking to you, but it's the complete antithesis of that. I need my coaches and my teammates to constantly push me and without them I would have achieved nothing. And it's not just my coaches and my teammates, it's also my parents and even my dad, he is praying that I don't say the wrong things right now. But it's also, not only all the people that love you and are constantly pushing you, it's the people that want to see you fail that are so instrumental in success because I think we have to realize as a collective human race, if I'm not getting too deep here, that everything is impossible until somebody does it. And people will constantly tell me, 50, 500, that's crazy, like, why would you ever do that? But, I mean, everything is impossible until somebody does it. And we do have one life and I don't think we should waste it asking ourselves, can I do this? Or telling ourselves, I should have done this? Or regretting things or chasing after people who don't really care or wanting to impress people who don't care. I think that we have to impress ourselves and we have to take risks because we only have one life and we should constantly be pushing the self-set and boundaries we have placed for ourselves and other people have placed for us to see just how far we can go. And that's all I'd like to say.
Mr. Hatsis, I think you've got a graduation speaker coming up in a couple of years.
So have Mr. Fry to our...
Okay, I'd like to introduce Coach Amy Radovic and Katie Saladin and Mr. Ebling. Coach Radovic took over, it's her first year as the head coach after being an assistant for several years, and was fortunate enough to be able to coach Katie, who as a sophomore, won the 100-yard Class L, 100-yard backstroke Class L. She was the state champion, so congratulations to Katie for that.
She doesn't have to speak.
All right. Thank you.
While we're on the topic of Ward, I do have to point out that the Ward volleyball team does get a bit of an assist on the Ludlow record this year because for the first time in a long time, the Ward volleyball team won against Ludlow and that inspired this team to go on this run. So I think it was a total town-wide effort to get everyone over the bar. And we have one more honoree.
Good evening, everyone and board members, thank you so much for allowing us a few minutes and as a very proud headmaster tonight for both schools along with Mr. Ebling, we did have one more honoree that we wanted to share with you. Back on November 19th, in front of his family, friends, colleagues, and many of his coaches there, the Fairfield Ludlow High School Athletic Director, none other than Mr. Dave Schultz, was inducted into the Connecticut High School Coaches Association Hall of Fame. Over the last 40 years, this group only identifies a handful of individuals in the state per year and some of Connecticut's most legendary coaches can now deservedly call Dave a colleague. Dave's dedication and passion for the development of young people extends well beyond the area of athletics. He is a teacher, he is a mentor, he is a coach, he's a father figure, not to mention a great dad, to decades' worth and thousands of young people as they work to become better students, better players, better people. Dave graduated from Andrew Ward High School, yes, he's a lifer here, and went on to teach and coach at Fairfield High School and then became Fairfield Ludlow's first and only athletic director so far. He has coached boys' basketball, track, and just last year was awarded Coach of the Year in Unified Sports. If you don't know what Unified Sports is, it's when our athletes are paired together with students who have complex learning needs or other disabilities and they play three seasons of sports. And if you've never been to one of the tournaments that we host at Ludlow and Dave organizes, we have like 15, 18 different schools come to participate in the tournament. It's awesome in soccer, basketball, and track. His list of accomplishments is long, so that's why I had to write them down, including numerous Coach of the Year awards from the league, the state, and the media. He sits on the Board of Directors of just about every major organization in Connecticut that exists to promote the advancement of young athletes and coaches. And he has built a program at Fairfield Ludlow High School that has so much success as you can see here tonight. One thing that Dave will point to with the most pride probably though is the fact that Ludlow has won its fourth straight sportsmanship award, which was awarded to our program earlier this year. So we thank Dave and for all he has done and continues to do. And for those of you who haven't heard yet, Dave is going to be retiring at the end of the year and we wish him all the best from both Ludlow and all the children of Fairfield. Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Schultz, would you like to say a word or two?
No, we've got...
Fair enough.
None of the things you do, don't you?
None that are as much fun as this.
Do you want to stay for the health insurance discussion?
Not yet. We've got our time.
So we do want to take a break in the meeting so that we can get appropriate photographs and we'll keep everybody where they need to be until the last parent has documented this event. Thank you.
The girls can come around and like the horseshoe in here and then eight board members wants to get a mile around.
Get that two rows.
Come right up to the front.
Come on up.
Come right up to the front.
Here we go.
Yeah, got it.
Last night.
And then I was like, oh, I'm so excited.
Last night, which is me too.
Yeah, she's not.
Yeah, I got one back.
Thank you very much, girls.
Congratulations to those.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, girls.
Congratulations to those.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, girls.
Congratulations to those.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, girls.
Congratulations to those.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, girls.
Congratulations to those.
Thank you.
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 Come on up.
Come right up to the front.
There we go.
Yeah, got it.
Last night.
And then I was like, oh, I'm so excited.
Last night, which is me too.
Yeah, she's not.
Yeah, I got one back.
Thank you very much, girls.
Congratulations to those.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, girls.
Congratulations to those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All over the school, the need for food this year, so they could provide families with a meal. And over 50 families got a Thanksgiving dinner this year, so that is also very impressive.
So, Mr. Schultz, our athletic director, who was just inducted into the Coaches Hall of Fame. He and several of our student athletes attended an annual sportsmanship conference. And they also, Fairfield Ludlow High School was one of 20 Connecticut high schools to receive the prestigious Michaels Cup for outstanding athletic programs. And Ms. Zimmerman, an art teacher at Fairfield Ludlow High School, is having her artwork featured in Newtown Municipal Center. Additionally, Alumni Day and advisory were integrated on the day preceding Thanksgiving. And the alumni came in and talked to the students about college and the process, which can be very complex and frightening at times. I think it was a really helpful advisory, the way it was conducted. There were a few field trips that went on since we last met. The civics and international relations class went on their UN field trip, which I heard was not as great as usual due to just traffic and some of the guides. But Amstead, the American Studies class, went on their New York City field trip, which I heard was great as usual. Also, the fall play opened, and it was quite successful. Ms. Poole, a math teacher at Fairfield Ludlow, arranged the GI Go Fund collection and collected $410 for veterans. The Teens for Tolerance Club began collecting Post-Its with positive messages written by students and staff to put on a poster board in January. And the candlelight concerts coming up, which the student body is anticipating quite eagerly. And preparation has begun in all of the math or music classes.
And you distributed a wristband. People in the TV audience might not have known what it was that you were doing, so could you describe it?
Oh, yeah. I was handing out wristbands, which came from the Sticks for Soldiers event that Isabella brought. So those are just from that event.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for our Fairfield Ludlow students from the board? Thank you. So, Ms. Agrello and Ms. Schuster, who wants to go first?
I'll go first. Hi, I'm Ashley. So, this past week, we had our fall school play. We had three productions of The Crucible, of which many of my friends attended. There was a fantastic performance. From what I saw on social media, there was a lot of people who came and supported these people, so I'm sure that all of their hard work and dedication had paid off. Thanksgiving Day, we had a football game, which ended the season at Ludlow, and we won. While I'm on the subject of sports, it was unknown to me that Ludlow had accomplished such a great achievement, so congratulations to you guys. Much like Ludlow, we also had Alumni Day before Thanksgiving, of which I attended two, and a lot of the juniors attended it. And we were able to ask a lot of college, high school alumni, I mean, questions about what college was like, what the process is like. And it was really informational and helpful to all of us.
Hi, I'm Brittany. So, we're all getting excited for the annual CareAlon that we have. It's gonna be going on December 22nd for all the public, so all the parents and stuff could come. And then we have an in-school performance the 23rd, right before Christmas break, the winter break. So we're all really excited about that. It's very fun, and I suggest you all go. We also have several holiday gift-giving drives going on, so we're all kind of happy about that. We can help a lot of people who can't really get gifts and are the less fortunate, so we're really excited and happy about doing that.
Thank you. I was able to go to both plays. They were a lot of dialogue that was very quick back and forth, and both student groups, both at Ward and Ludlow, did very well with those two plays. I think I recognize the name of somebody in the Ward play, but I don't want to mention Mrs. Maxine Cannelli's name. She was not in the play, her daughter was. Any questions for our Ward students? Thank you very much. Again, you're welcome to stay, and you're welcome to slip out as you wish. We're now at the time of the agenda for public comment on the gender items that are under discussion, any items that will be voting on, which are no... Okay, so discussion items. Any member of the public wish to come forward and make a presentation to the board on any of the discussion items? Okay, you're walking that way. Nobody? Okay, thank you. On to new business. This is our annual meeting in November in preparation. We have a series of meetings that we kind of prepare for the budget. Last month, we heard what program improvements may be contemplated. November has been the time that we get, not a final look, but an early look at what health insurance may be looking like for next year. So, Dr. Tylder, do you wish to make any opening comments?
Well, let's get right into it. So, Mrs. Muncell is here, and you might recall those who've been on the board, Carlton Lundgren from Aon Hewitt. And we have also a new person to introduce to you as well, but my guess is Carlton's doing most of the talking.
He's doing all of it.
Doing all the talking. So, Aon Hewitt is the health insurance consultant, who is under contract to the town and the Board of Education to advise us on Health Insurance Matters, and they do all these wonderful calculations. And then Ms. Muncell will walk us through how this impacts the profit and loss for the fund.
In the past, Dr. Tylder, we've gone through the actual calculations. Is that the preferred methodology this year? Okay, so it's page one in your handout.
And only as a... We do have two new board members. They're very sharp, so they pick up early, but if you use certain three-letter code words or something like that, it might be helpful if you explained it.
I sure will. Okay, so page one in the handout represents the year that we're currently in, the July 1 of 15 through June 30 of 2016. So I'll go through the calculation using the active medical column, and then the other columns to the right follow the same mathematics. So I think if we just go through that one, and then we can certainly open it up for questions. So on line one, it's experience period paid claims. That's the latest 12 months of paid claims for active medical, $20,317. From that, we would subtract out any claims that are in excess of the... The ISL stands for Individual Stop-Loss Limit. The reason the number's here is zero is not because there weren't any large claims, but Cigna, as a vendor, when they provide us claim experience, they take the claims that are in excess of the $200,000 individual stop-loss... I'm sorry, $300,000 individual stop-loss limit. They take them out of the experience. So they're already taken out, but I can go through the number of large claims and so forth later on. Trend factor of 1.05, which is, I guess, an easier way to say, taking the claims from the experience period that we have and moving them forward to finish this year. So we expect the claims to go up another 5%, basically, to fill out the 7 of 15 to 7 of 16 policy year. And that's using an annual trend factor of 7.6. So we're gonna trend that over nine months. 7.6 over nine months is 5%. So the $20,317 increased by 5% gives you $21,333. Divide that by the number of employees that were enrolled during that experience period, during that 12-month experience period of 1,000, I'm sorry, 1,233, gives you $17,299 per employee per year, per active employee per year. Projecting that forward to what we expect in the remainder of the 2015-16 policy year of 1,239 lives projects claims now at $21,437 through the end of the 15-16 policy year. You have to add administrative expenses. That's Cigna's basic cost of doing business, if you will. The ACA PCORI fee and transitional reinsurance fee are part of the Affordable Care Act, so those are federally mandated charges. The stop-loss from July 1 of 15 to 16, that's the charge that the stop-loss vendor charges to protect those claims in excess of $300,000. So that's $724,000. So if you add lines 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, you get $22,931. And then the number right below that, the $22,651, is the number that we projected when we were last year here at this time. We projected that the active medical would be $22,651. It looks like it's gonna be $22,931, a $279,000 shortfall, if you will. So now, if you move all the way over to the right-hand side, the last three columns are all three coverages combined. And in that last, last column, all the way to the right is the total. So we expect the 15-16 year to be $31,527. We had projected $31,343, so we missed it by $183,000 or .6%. So you're spending .6% more than what we had projected last year at this time. Okay, so that's the 15-16 year. The next page is the 16-17 year. And again, the math is the exact same, so if you go all the way to the right-hand side, we're projecting a cost of $34,205 divided by the cost or the budget from last year of $31,343 is an increase of $2,000,000... I can't even see that with my glasses on. $2,861 or 9.1%.
And that's... So, if I can summarize this, correct me if I'm wrong, because I often goof this up. So, the claims are very close to what you projected for the current year.
Correct.
So, what explains the fact that you're projecting that the claims for next year will go up about 9% is the combination of two things. One is trend, which is 7.6%. So if claims were totally flat, move it all forward, you're going up 7.6% no matter what.
Correct.
That's part of it. And the other thing I noticed in here that's going up, that probably explains the rest of it, although I might not be completely correct, is you're expecting a 20% increase in the stop-loss premium for next year.
Yeah, it's a function of three things. It's annual trend, and it is different for all three lines of coverage.
Right.
The annual trend for the medical, 7.6, but it's 10.5.
Right, for the...
For the prescription.
Right.
And on a smaller piece, the dental is 4.5.
Right. Okay, all three of those put together is about the number.
That, there are some... Well, we're in a rate guarantee, so there are no administrative fee increases, but there is a stop-loss increase, and if there's any change in headcounts.
Right, okay. So it's 9.1% is actually pretty normal in this world, that, you know...
Very average.
Right. The claims experienced over the last 12 months is approximately what we thought it was gonna be and what we budgeted for, but when you trend that forward at 9%, it's a big number.
Right.
Okay.
Before we go on to the retention fund, if board members have questions on the two documents that are produced by Aon, and as a reminder, Aon is under one contract to the town and services both the town needs and the Board of Ed needs, and so the town hired Aon for that purpose. Questions from the board? Mr. Llewellyn?
A couple of quick questions, please. I noticed that the CVS CareMark portion of prescription for the current year increased 7%, but it's being rolled forward to close to a 20% increase.
Right.
Is there something that's driving that big of a change, or is that just market-driven pricing?
Yeah, that's...
Or change in plan?
Yeah, well, the first page, when you see the 6.1%...
6.9 or 6.1?
Yeah, 6... Well, 6.9 on the active, but 6.1 overall.
Got it.
So if you move two columns to the...
Yep.
So that's suggesting that you're already 6.1 percentage points behind the eight ball in the 15-16 year. So that's compared to the budget that was set for 15-16 last year at this time.
Okay, so that's...
So that's... So they're gonna... The board's coming in at 6.1% higher than what we had projected last year at this time. So that coupled with the trend that Dr. Tylder talked about of another 10 is why you're seeing that 18... And that 10 is compounded, so that's why you're seeing that 18% in the renewal year.
Sorry, is that a 6.9 versus budget or versus prior year?
That's 6.9 versus budget.
And what was it versus prior year?
Well, if... Versus prior year, it's always gonna be trend. It's always gonna be whatever the trend number is for prescription. So I think last year, the trend number would have been 9.5, so it would have been 9.5% higher than last year.
Okay, so it was really 15 higher? If we were expecting it to go up by nine, but we missed by seven?
Right.
So it really went up by 15?
Yeah.
Actual versus prior?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a bad year for prescriptions.
Is it this year?
Current year.
That's in the current year. Yeah, that's in the current year. I can tell you... Yeah, I mean, I can tell you that we do, as an organization, we do a trend survey every six months, and we publish that, you know, to whoever wants to see it, basically. And it takes into consideration 50 healthcare companies and our 200 trend actuaries and so forth. Prescription trend has gone up... Specialty prescription trend has gone up five points, five full points, in the past six months.
If like...
Well, yeah, because you... I mean, you see it on the news. Humira and all of these drugs that they advertise are super expensive, injectables in the office. There's a lot more of those in the pipeline coming forward than there are brand-name drugs coming off going to generic. So the outlook for prescription is not good.
Interesting. Thank you. And then, in terms of the medical, retiree was 17.6 below budget, not below prior year, correct? I'm sorry, I'm back on the first page.
Below budget.
Second column, Cigna Medical, bottom percent change line 18.
Right. And we don't really... Because of the size of the group, we wouldn't look at that with any credibility at all. It's 100 people, so, you know, you have a couple sick people in 100, and that can swing wildly from year to year. So we really look at the medical in total, as opposed to by active and retiree. We show it by active and retiree, just for informational purposes, but in terms of how we generate, whether the rates are gonna go up or down, is by medical in total.
Okay. And then, I guess my last question... Well, my last question on this page is, or the next page, is the 20% increase in SL expense, in the stop-loss.
Yep.
Is that a market thing that's going on right now?
No, that's pretty general. A general stop-loss increase would be in the range of 20%.
But it's market-based, or is it experience-based?
That's what I'm asking.
Well, yeah. Well, stop-loss is based on a vendor's pool of stop-loss experience. So it is experience-based, but it's not your own experience, it's the experience of the pool.
Got it.
And the reason that it's 20% and not regular trend is because of the effect that we call leveraging. So as your claims trend, and you continue to have the same individual stop-loss limit, the amount that gets paid from the pool doesn't trend at the normal rate, it trends significantly higher. If you go through and you do the math, and you have this line, you know, your trend line going forward this way, and your individual stop-loss limit line stays flat...
I get it.
Those increases don't go up at 9%, they go up closer to 20. So that's why stop-loss increases are generally in the range of 20%. They can be low... If your experience is really good, the stop-loss vendor will give you a little bit of a break, and maybe not be 20. It'll be, you know, between 15 and 20. And if it's really bad, it'll be higher than 20.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Other board members have questions? Mr. Patton?
A couple of things. First, in general, you're talking about the trend factor. We had many of these conversations last year, you and I, about... Pretty much it's been consistent at about 8% for a while now, so you're not anticipating or seeing any change in that basic number across your...
Yeah, medical trend's actually gone down slightly over the past year or so.
So that's a good thing?
Yeah, but that... I mean, yeah, that's...
That's not much... I mean, the percentage seems very small.
It's completely offset by the increase in the prescription trend, though.
Prescription trend. So, and you had mentioned before about claims in excess of the ISL that they took... The insurance companies took those out of the equation.
Right.
Can you give us a little bit of overview as far as how many large claims we had?
A lot.
More than the average of the last couple of years?
20, 20 in the... In excess of 150,000. Let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 9 in excess of 300,000, 3 in excess of 500,000, and 1 of almost 1 million.
In other words, we got our money's worth.
You got your money's worth, yeah.
If I can...
Claims... Claims... Excuse me, just for a second. Claims over the individual stop-loss limit amounted to $1,474 for a stop-loss charge of approximately $700,000. Sorry?
Yeah, roughly.
Yeah, roughly $700,000.
And for the benefit of the new board members, a couple of, like, five years ago, the board... The then-board increased the stop-loss limit. And each year or every other year, we've kind of asked, was that still a good decision? And the way to look at it is the cost of the premium versus what we got in return. And every year, we've always been on the plus side. Sometimes only by a little bit, but we've always been on the plus side for using that stop-loss.
Right.
Other questions that board members have? Mr. Patton?
Follow-up on basically what you just said. So, in other words, you could kind of boil this down to the stop-loss has increased about 20% again, but we're getting far more than that, you know, in terms of bang for the buck, just like our community here, in other words?
This year.
This year?
Yeah.
I know every year changes as...
Yeah, and, you know, on a group this size and the nature of large claims, they're very unpredictable. So you could have 20 large claims this year and three next year.
Well, that's never happened.
Well, it hasn't happened... It has happened, it hasn't happened in a while, but we've been on a relatively bad run of large claims over the last few years, but...
And that's why that phrase "hope springs eternal" makes sense. Mr. Patton, do you have other questions?
No, just to end it, so the 20% increase, that's pretty much been, you know, an average for the pool itself from, you said, the last couple of years, right?
Yeah, and that's not just with Cigna, that's with virtually every vendor. The average is around 20.
Thank you.
Last question on these two pages, and then we'll move on to the third one?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Just to clarify, the stop-loss kicks in at 300, correct?
Correct.
For the footnote?
Correct.
Okay, so the number of 20 over 150, and there were nine, so there were 11, there were nine over 300, so there were 11 between 150 and 300 that we fully absorbed as a district. Stop-loss kicked in. What happens to that premium if we want to drop that level? Drop it from 300 to 200? I mean, it seems like...
It goes up.
Clearly.
Yeah.
But does it go up exponentially, or maybe if we're getting a 2:1 return this year?
Yeah, generally, the stop-loss vendor, when they do their underwriting, they will dollar-for-dollar increase the stop-loss charge by what they think the reduction in claim liability will be.
They'll take our history?
They'll...
They'll take those 11 and take differential...
They won't look at your individual history, they'll look at history within the pool, within their pool, and say, if they want to drop it down to 200, which generally doesn't happen, quite frankly, normally it continues to go up because claims continue to trend forward.
Right.
You normally don't go backwards with your stop-loss limit, you normally go forward. But if you wanted to go backwards, they'd say, okay, so it's gonna be a 25% increase to go... And I'm just making this number up, to go from 300 to 200,000. But that's, you know, that's gonna equal the difference in the claim liability to the expected pay to the board, right? So it's usually a dollar-for-dollar.
Okay.
Thank you. Without doing the math, I think in the past, you have said, this is still a good deal for us, and you wouldn't recommend going below 300.
Yeah, we generally advise our clients to keep an individual stop-loss limit based on the group's size, rather than historical experience, because, as I said before, you know, at 1,400 lives, large claims can fluctuate wildly, so we generally do it by size.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Muncell, I think you've got the last page.
Okay, page three is... We'll look at columns two and three. Those are the numbers that Carlton just explained. Page one was the 15-16, the current year. That's in column two. The first line, we start with the balance, our June 30 balance for last year, the cash available. The next two lines are our budget. The $21,969 was the original budget request, and then the $367 is what was added as it went through the budget process. Roughly $120,000 will be moved into medical retention from wage and benefit. Other income is employee contributions, grants, rebates, other sources of revenue. That gets us down to a subtotal of the $33,278 in income. There's... We also collect on a supplemental plan that we have, the $154, so total available income of the $33.4. And then, this next section is the expenses that Carlton just explained, the $31,527. Is that line 15 from page one? Then the expenses for the Medicare supplement, which don't... Which are outside of this self-insurance, is the $165. It comes to a total expenses of $31,693, leaving us a balance, a projected balance of the $1.7 million. And then we have IBNR that we reserve to pay out runoff claims of the $2,700,000, leaving us with the net balance of the negative $268. And then the next column, column three, carries over the $1.7 million balance, projected If we... Going down to the bottom of that column, if we cover IBNR 100%, which means that the bottom line is zero, backing into a budget number, we come up with a $24.8 million for 16-17, which is a $2.5 million increase, or 11% increase over the prior year. or 11% increase over the prior year. The other, you know, we projected down, in blue, the other income, we project that for the following year, the 9.8 million, then the same, you know, same calculations, the total revenue. The expenses that Carlton just explained from page two, line 18, gets us down to a balance of 2.178, which is the IBNR number that's calculated.
So IBNR, claims incurred but not reported, essentially one month's worth of claims, rough number. And so our goal had always been to be at one times our IBNR. And when you fall behind, then you have to play catch-up at some point. And so if I look and say, 9% increase in costs and 2% catch-up for IBNR and 11%, just pops out, right? Am I following that in simplified terms?
Yes.
Other questions from board members? Mr. Llewellyn?
Couple of questions. Could you please break out for us what, like, say, the top three lines are of the $9 million of kind of miscellaneous, the 9.8...
Mean other income.
Correct. What are the top three lines in there?
What is it made up? I don't have the numbers, but it's made up of employee contributions, that's a large portion of it. Retiree payment, anybody that's on COBRA that's paying for their insurance, grants. We also fund some of the insurance and grants, and rebates. We get rebates back from CVS on the prescription. So that's all additional revenue that we account in that number.
Could you give us that detail?
Sure.
Thank you.
But the lion's share is employee contribution.
Right.
Okay. And I guess this is kind of a question first for Aon. What is the town using as their target percentage for the IBNR? Are they using a month? Are they using 9%? Are they using eight and a half? Do you know?
Those are two different questions, I think. What is the trend, and then what is the goal for IBNR, right?
Well, the IBNR calculation is actually done by our actuaries and formalized in a letter and so forth. It's not, to Chairman Dwyer's point, it generally runs around a month, but it doesn't have to be. It's based on claim lag patterns, which is how long it takes between when a claim is incurred and when it makes its way through the vendor's banking system.
Right.
So it's, you know, there are times when it runs slower, and there are times that it runs faster. But generally, it's somewhere between four to five weeks, if you will. So we use the exact same calculation for the board as we do for the town.
Okay, so if it's four weeks, that would be a month, which would mean that our... Is this 2.178 million, is this Aon's calculation of IBNR, or is that the district's?
The, as of 6/30...
I mean, the furthest right-hand corner, bottom three, preliminary 201617, claims for accrual medical prescription dental IBNR.
Yeah, we provide the IBNR calculation every June 30th of every year. We don't go forward and make an estimate of what we think it is. We actually calculate what we know the runoff responsibility will be as of that June 30th.
So you provide that to us on or about June 30?
Right.
Okay.
Right. So on June 30th of 16, you'll get what we think the number is, the incurred number prior to June 30th of 16, and what we think is going to be the payment after June 30th of 16. So that number's not developed yet.
Correct.
So this is, we take the old number and kind of trend that forward, or at least increase it to get it where it needs to be.
So is this 2.178 Aon's number trended, trended by Aon or trended by the district?
By us.
Yeah, that's...
District, because it's 6% versus, I think our target for the town is eight and a half or 9%? Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head what the town's is.
So if one month of the 34,371 is 2,808 versus...
Well, it wouldn't be on the 34,371, because we wouldn't reserve for the Medicare sub-stuff.
Okay, so it's the 34,205?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
So...
It wouldn't be that either.
Yeah, we simply take the IBNR that Aon provides at June 30, 15, was 1.9 million, and we just trend it up based on the increase in, the percentage increase in claims.
The percentage.
It's claims, not all the other expenses.
Right.
It's just claims, right.
So it's the 34,205, correct? Which would be subtotal expenses, medical claims, prescription claims, and dental claims.
But that would, that would develop the IBNR at June 30, 17.
Correct.
17.
17, okay. But I'm just wondering, the IBNR here looks light, because we're plugging toward... I think we're backing into that number by trying to solve for zero, rather than stepping back and saying one month's worth of claims would be on June 30, 2017, 34,205 divided by 12, or roughly $2.8 million. Am I missing something? I guess where I'm going with this is, that's 6% versus what I think I'm hearing, the target should be closer to 8 or 9%. And not that I want to run things up, but if we take a look at what we ended up having to take back over the last couple of years from the operating budget to fill a hole in our medical retention, maybe we should project our medical retention where, you know, at recommended levels.
Yeah. The actual calculation of the June 30, 15 IBNR is 1,900,000.
1.9.
So if you trended that forward, you're going to get 2.1.
Okay, but if I look at my 31,527, and I divide that by my 12 months, it's 2.6 million.
Yeah, but you can't divide by 12 months, it's an actual calculation based on the lag. So we can show you the calculation if you want to see the IBNR calculation.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because there's a half a million dollar disconnect. And we are relatively negative, and we've been trending that way for quite some time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you had said before, it's between four and five weeks is what our experience is in terms of incurred and billed.
I don't know what your experience in terms of the lag patterns, because I don't, I myself don't do that. Our actuaries do it, and so, yeah. So I don't know whether it's four or five. I said, in general, it's
Got it.
Four or five weeks. But this is the actual calculation, you know, it's actually done, all the lag numbers are there and everything. It's 1,900,000 at June 30 of 15.
15.
Right.
Is that it?
We would generally take that number and trend it forward.
And based on that, what were total expenses for June 30, 15? In other words, we look at our line here called subtotal expense, which is 31,343, which is our claims. I'm in the first column, and I'm looking at medical, dental, and prescription, 31,343.
Yep.
That would be projected for 2016. What was that number for?
That was 1516.
Right, and what was that for 14, the actual we just did in June? What was our actual there?
29.8.
29.8, thank you very much.
I don't have that number with me.
Not looking at the individual calculations, but this year, we quote, missed by 0.6% or 183,000.
Correct.
The methodology that you have used to calculate the last several years, you haven't changed that methodology in terms of projection.
Unchanged.
Unchanged, thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Actually, I do have a follow-up based on your most recent comment.
I will stop talking if it seems as though you need to follow up on everything I say.
Well, no, I'm trying to understand.
Mr. Llewellyn, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The 183, does that include the additional funds that the town put in that we put in? Or that's just straight expense?
That's just...
What 183 are you talking about?
The 183 is based on...
That's expense projection versus...
Right. Our projection for 1516 last year at this time was 31,343. Given the latest 12 months of paid claims, so we're now, you know, how many months in?
Six.
Yeah, six months in, so we're trending that, we're using more recent claim experience to project now for the same year, we're going to come up with 31,527.
Okay.
That doesn't necessarily mean that 31,527 is what the number is actually going to be for 1516. It's just our best guess at this point.
That's change in projection versus actual versus projection.
Right.
Got it. Thank you so much for talking about that.
Any other questions from board members? Any final comments, Dr. Tittle, that you wish to make?
Just saying, in terms of budget impact, which is the whole reason we're doing this. So right now, on page three, column four, if we were to budget today, and there's still another month to go, we'll redo this in a month before we actually put the numbers down in the budget. And if we were going to cover 100% of our IBNR, we would need to add to our budget the 2,505,681. So round numbers with 161 million dollar budget, that's about a percent and a half for this item. I will say that when we run a bit short on our IBNR, the town's guidance last year was, "Cover your costs, do no harm." In other words, end up with the budget to cover your costs, you end up with the same gross number at the end of 1617 that you get at the end of 1516. That would lessen what we would need to put into the budget by approximately $300,000. So, in other words, the 1,739,622 in yellow at the bottom of column two, that's the number we would, in the do-no-harm budgeting strategy that the town endorsed last year, we would be shooting to hit that number rather than the magenta 2,178,553. I think it's magenta, I don't know. So that right now is the range that the budget's going to get hit for health insurance at this moment. But they do one more projection, and in a month, sometimes claims can change dramatically. So this is a preview of coming attractions, but not the full movie.
Yeah, the chance that these will be the exact numbers you see in the budget are pretty slim, because they always adjust slightly because of a month's activity.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Ladies and gentlemen.
By the way, Carlton, did you get a chance to introduce your new partner here to us, even though he didn't get a chance to speak?
You can speak all you want. Joel Chamberlain?
Thank you. Right. Thank you. Very good.
So we are now on item B, the Fairfield BoE proposed capital non-reoccurring projects, and that's enclosure two in your packet. I'll ask the police chief if he would come forward and join Mr. Cullen at the table. This has the list of a number of projects on page 21 of the book, is where we talk about security, recognizing that our chief has more than a few things to do in a day. I would ask Mr. Cullen if he could start on page 21, and then we'll deal with any questions on security, recognizing that we don't like to talk too deeply about security at public meetings. And then when we're finished with questions on security, the chief can be on his way, and then we'll go back to the rest of the book. Dr. Tittle, do you have any comments that you want to make at the beginning?
Let me just tee up the security piece. Last year, the police department, after completing an extensive review of our facilities with respect to security, made a number of recommendations for the town, Board of Ed, to consider in terms of hardening the infrastructure. We put forward a request. That request, while it was received favorably, the town decided to split the request into two years. So they are expecting year two to come forward because they know they didn't fund the full amount. And so what we did was, after having a year's experience in researching and beginning to implement some of the year one requests, some of the, there's some changes in year two which have changed some of the costs. So we're actually requesting a little bit more than the 50%, the money that was left from the last time. And we pared it back to the four key areas that are on page 24. That's really the guts of the list. And so I think that, to the extent that the chief can talk to each of these, you know, we can talk about why they're important, but one thing that has become more costly than we thought, both the top two items, the panel and the cameras have gotten more expensive. And the police department, in conjunction with our staff, has been doing an extensive research on window film versus panels and so on and so forth. And I think they finally landed on a product that the chief feels comfortable about. So let's maybe walk through those items, chief, if you would, and why you think this is appropriate for us to consider.
I don't know whether you want to start, Tom?
Was there more you wanted to say?
No.
I jumped in. I'm going to let you do the other ones.
Okay. You know, I will be here to speak about it. I certainly, Sal Morabito from the school has certainly put forth a lot of effort to that. I would caution us to talk too deeply in these. Obviously, this is the second year, as Dr. Tittle has indicated, on our improvements. And if you recall, last year, we had some extensive conversations with regards to some of the infrastructure improvements. We're looking district-wide, and this is really the follow-up to this. That first item, obviously, we've learned from past events that some of the vulnerabilities lie with certain areas, and that first item on that list is meant to address that issue. We're certainly tested, and we did some, as Dr. Tittle indicated, some extensive testing with regards to the product that we feel is most value-added at a cost that we can handle, or that at least we believe to be value-added at a significantly reduced cost as opposed to a higher product. This product, we believe, suits that purpose. Secondly, I can't speak too much to the cameras, but obviously, as you can understand, we want to provide that security net over all of our buildings. And a lot of the ways we do that is through security cameras, and how we interact those security cameras with the responding emergency services, which we have the capability to do now, and this will enhance our capability. Third on that list is bollards at some of the entries. We know that the design of some of our buildings, while they are certainly aesthetic and look nice, they certainly add some areas that need some protection, and those bollards, we believe, will limit access to some of those wide-open areas that present themselves before the entrances. And the last one presented kind of speaks for itself, just some door hardware upgrades. But that kind of is an overview summary. I know we went through most of this last year. This is not any additions to the list that we provided last year. It's just the continued funding stream for what was requested last year. Any subtractions? The concepts are the same one year to the other.
Well, we did take...
The dollar amounts change.
Yeah, we took a few of the smaller items off because we really wanted to try to keep this down to a manageable size of what we could really realistically do in one year. So there were some small items. You might, if you compare the list, you'll see there's some $5,000 items and $10,000 items, and we just said, look, well, you know, let's go for the stuff that's really, really significant and put our money in these areas. So we have not, one thing we've delayed, because we're still in a sort of decision-making, it's in here in a page, which you probably can remove as this moves forward, is the Raptor system. Raptor system. That system is in place at both high schools. If you've visited the high schools, you know that we have a security service that we've contracted with who check people in. They put their ideas into a system called Raptor, it's described in here. At this point, we were considering expanding that to other schools through this process, but at this point, these were higher priorities. So, at this point, that's on hold, but that could resurface, because I think that this could be the kind of thing where there's a year-three going forward. I think this is constantly evolving. We had some ideas based on the October 23 incident, which I, when I spoke to PTA council, I said we were researching some security upgrades that we didn't even know about until we had the massive district-wide lockdown. And we're just not in a position yet to recommend those. So, just because something was potentially taken off the list from last year doesn't mean it's not coming back.
Any other comments that you wish to make, board members, questions from individual board members? Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, and, yeah, okay. Mr. Patton?
Just one basic question, actually, through the chair, probably Dr. Tittle, unless somebody else can answer this. What's the dollar difference between what was anticipated being spent on security for this versus what we're asking for now?
Yeah. I took a quick note on that. The dollar amount is $2,020,692, which you see there. It's about a $500,000 difference from what we were requesting last year when it was whole.
Okay, that's what I thought. So, it's about one and a half to roughly two now.
Yep.
Ms. Carnell?
Through the chair, Dr. Tittle. I believe, does the federal government give us any rebates or any subsidizing any of the security?
We did get one state rebate bonding. One round of funding came from the state for some security upgrades, but it didn't impact the bonding that we did last year, it was in the prior year. They put a second round of funding out that we did not get, we applied for. At this point, I don't know of any other funding rounds coming from the state, although we've asked about it, and I'm not aware of anything from the federal government unless the chief is.
No, nothing.
Nothing on the horizon from the feds.
Keep checking, but nothing yet.
Right. We scour it, and a good thing about having something like this is that usually, when they put out some sort of a grant, there's a matching requirement, and so, we are spending money, so we'd be eligible for a match. But right now, it looks like, you know, the town really took this seriously last year, and they really were committed to, you know, doing everything they could. They just felt that, since we weren't going to get it all done in one year anyways, why go through the exercise? And so, we've learned more, and so, we feel this is even a better proposal than last year. But we can't expect any federal funding.
Any other questions, Ms. Carnell? Mrs. Maxon Connolly?
Mr. Patton asked my question.
Ms. Pitko?
This is actually to the chair, to the chief. I was listening to it, and I just wanted to clarify, are some of the cameras in each of the schools going directly to the police department?
We have the ability to monitor all the cameras. So, now, whether, now, yeah, we have the ability to monitor all the cameras.
Any other questions on the security package? Ms. Carnell?
I'm not sure, from the chair, I'm not sure who this goes to, but, Dr. Tittle, you mentioned it, as a result of the lockdown, is there going to be a big change in what the security upgrades will be? Or should, will there be a cost to things that might have been missing, or came up as an afterthought?
Yeah, we're really still in the process of debriefing that whole exercise, and we identified a couple areas where we thought we could make some changes, infrastructure changes that could qualify for this list, but we just weren't in the position to feel confident enough to bring them forward. And while we had a lot of unfinished business here, we thought this was the priority. So, I'm being somewhat evasive, because I need to be, but we're, and I guess, you know, chief would say, we're constantly reevaluating. And, you know, something may happen in the next four or five months, some guidance may come from the state, you may learn something from other chiefs, and we may have to change direction.
Yeah, I think, system-wide, what we learned from the October event was that this district is very well-prepared, and the initiatives put forth over the last several years have really, really have proven themselves on that particular day. And I think when we look and debrief it, and it is true, we are still debriefing it, there's a lot to still go, and it is still an active investigation, I might add, I don't think that anything from that debrief was going to be over-the-top funding-wise. There was nothing there that we saw that would change our direction a great deal from the direction we're headed. These were minor in comparison costs that might, we might evaluate and look to improve some of the minor things that might need some improvement, but I wouldn't look for anything over-the-top as a result of that response.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, thank you very much for including us in your daily tasks.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me, it's always...
Really appreciate the support that the chief and his department have on all elements of security, but in developing this, we really want to be comfortable that the Board of Ed and the police department are together on this, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
On this.
Mr. Cullen?
Let me do a little procedural thing, and then I'll have Tom talk. I know, I'm on a roll. I'll be quiet shortly. This is what we do. So, just procedurally, how this plays out, for the benefit of maybe the public, or maybe the new board members, or whoever, so, this takes a separate track from the operating budget. This is a first reading, so to speak, so there's no vote tonight. We would expect a vote at the January 12 meeting, for both this and for the capital projects that we're going to discuss at the next agenda item. Once the board approves these items, again, they have nothing to do with the operating budget, this is bonded money, and it's all bonded money that, by and large, was captured in the waterfall schedule and the long-range facilities plan. So, this is not like a complete surprise to anybody in town as well that these things are coming, that we would then go, if the board approves them on January 12, we would go to the second Board of Selectmen meeting in January, hoping to get on that agenda. If it's approved by the Board of Selectmen, we would go to the February RTM, February Board of Finance meeting. In an ideal world, the Board of Finance would approve it, and then the February RTM meeting would be the final stop on the approval path, and then, at that point, a certain number of days after they act, then the money is available for our expenses. That concludes the whole process, you know, well before each of those bodies has to consider the operating budget. So, we're trying to keep this on a separate track. Often, the town, or the town has tried to keep their capital non-recurring on that same schedule. If they, for some reason, aren't on the same schedule, then this could get postponed, or we may just go separately. So, that's the track we're on. Now, I'll be quiet, and let Mr. Cullen describe the other projects.
And, part of the rationale, before Mr. Cullen starts speaking, is that virtually every school system spends the summer doing capital projects. And if we don't get a capital project budget approved until, let's say, the May meeting of the RTM, then it makes it more difficult for our staff to schedule and implement projects over the summer. So, not only does it help us to separate these from just putting material together, answering questions, making presentations, but also, it helps us eventually get in front of the queue, if you will, in getting work done.
Mr. Cullen, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate the input, and you're right, a lot of these projects will require architectural engineering services, drawings and bid documents to go out to bid, to find and seek the lowest-qualified bidder to do the project, so there's a lot of time involved. We're presenting the booklet tonight for the proposed capital non-recurring 1617. There are five projects totaling $3,170,692. The first project is right here at this location, Central Office, 501 Kings Highway East. This is our IT server room. It was installed in 2002. The room itself is extremely small, and the department and the equipment inside of that room has doubled over the years. The fire suppression system to protect everything in that room is original to 2002 and antiquated, and the cooling system for that room is inadequate and also old. In the past 12 months, the cooling system has gone down seven times. It's critical that we have cooling for this space on a 24-hour-a-day, 365-days-a-year basis. So, what we're recommending is a renovation of this room, an upgrade of the fire suppression system for the size of the room and the equipment in there, and a new Lieberd air conditioning system that's typical for IT server rooms, and to do the room correctly. The booklet is set up so that we do follow Fairfield's 14-question bullet points that gives you all the information, an estimate and quotation from contractors or professionals, and then some photographs. So, if you go to pages five and six, you'll see that the server room is actually two small rooms, it's very crowded. The bottom picture shows a temporary cooling unit. When the system's down, we have to put temporary cooling in place and monitor that on a regular basis, and on weekends. And on page six, you'll see a typical layout of our IT racks and a nice Lieberd air conditioning unit that should be installed to make this room proper and work properly.
I don't know if you want to take them one at a time, Mr. Chairman?
Go through the whole thing.
Go on, okay.
And Nancy Burns is here, so if people have questions about the IT, and what the consequences are when that thing goes down, she'll be happy to explain it.
The second project is at Dwight Elementary School. This has been an issue for as long as I've been here, 14 years. The original design, if you're familiar with Dwight, is when you run up the concrete stairs, they then turn into very large, 10-foot-by-10-foot wood-timber stairs filled with wood chips. And there's four of those, and then you're up onto the playground, that's all wood chips. Well, the wood chips continually wash down the stairs, onto the concrete stairs, continually have to be swept off, they're down in the parking lot, and we have children that are falling, and it's a very unsafe condition. We'd like to eliminate the wood-timber old stairs filled with wood chips and put concrete in with proper handrails. Along with that, there's a retaining wall that goes across three-quarters of the playground and stops. The area where it stops, the wood chips are washing down and adding to this stair problem. So, we want to continue the retaining wall over. And we provided some photographs of that. If you go to page 11, you'll see the concrete stairs walking up with the yellow striping on them, they're filled with wood chips and leaves and debris, and then, as you finish those stairs, you see the four that are done with wood timbers and filled with wood chips. And then, if you look at page 12, a new staircase that we just put in with proper handrails is nice and clean and free from debris, and easy to walk up and down, and safer. Page 13, the top photograph on the left shows you the retaining wall where it stops by that birch tree. The photo below is where it's all washing down and around, and on page 14, you'll see a new retaining wall we just built this past summer at Rodgelo Middle School. We just want to continue that retaining wall, put the proper drainage in, and contain the wood chips we're supplying to the playground to keep them in place. As we move to pages 15 and 16, we're at Lovelo High School. I'm happy to report that this will be our last boiler project for a while. We've been replacing boilers since 2005. Fairfield-Lovel High School has two 1971 boilers, and that will bring all the schools up to date with boilers for a long time. If you see, on page 19, you can see the photograph of the existing old boilers that are leaking and have rust on them, and on page 20, at the top, is a brand-new boiler we just put in this summer at Fairfield Ward High School. More efficient, more energy-efficient, more savings for our utilities. The next few pages is the security update that we already provided you. So, if you go to page 29, we're at the final project. This is a system-wide project mainly for the secondary schools. It is an information technology upgrade, an electrical upgrade for our multimedia projectors to receive a new CAT 6 wiring and a quad outlet at all locations. And we provided some photographs on pages 33 and 34 to show that work.
So, I'll take any questions you might have, or if you need more information.
Nancy can talk to two of them, you might as well come up to the table, just in case.
Questions from the board? Mrs. Maxon Connolly?
Two immediate questions. On this last one, on page 29 and 30, is this something that's needed across all the schools? Is this an upgrade that's being concentrated in a few of them?
It's primarily the secondary schools, because in 2012, we did the majority of the elementary schools. So, we did quad outlets at that time. We have infrastructure now where we want to project using hands-free devices, tablets and that sort of thing, and those, for lack of a more technical term, doohickeys, require power in the ceiling. There's a lot of different versions, so I didn't want to use a brand name. And what we found in Lovelo Middle, for example, is when they put the projectors in, they only put a dual outlet, and we really need the quad to make that work. So, that's one of the things that we want to do. The other piece is, when we installed the new projectors in 2012, again, in most of the elementary schools, we ran CAT 6 wiring, so we can remotely control the projectors. So, if a teacher says, "It's not projecting well," or, you know, "My angle is wrong," we can actually fix it remotely, which keeps the teacher happy.
Funding on the furniture?
Yes, keeps the teacher happy, and means that my staff doesn't have to drive six miles to go fix something. It also gives us the capability of monitoring the bulb, so when they're getting to the end of useful life in hours, we can send our technician out to replace the bulb before the teacher has downtime, because the bulb finally goes.
Okay. And my second question, I believe, through the chair, go to Dr. Tittle, just as a general thing, when we've talked about that waterfall, what we always said was that as things impacted those numbers, we might have to make adjustments elsewhere. Does that $500,000 number make you think we are already looking at needing to make some adjustments, or is...
Meaning on the security?
You're projecting onto other, you know, town...
Right.
Well, just for the overall waterfall?
Yeah, I don't think it makes a huge difference in the overall waterfall. I think it's got millions of dollars.
That's a small amount.
It's a really small amount, in the big picture, yeah. We use sort of as a threshold for these, capital non-recurring, about $100,000, and, you know, it's impossible to project every one of them for the next 10 years, so I think there's some expectation that we will roll through projects as they become needed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, about the boilers at Lovelo, you said there are three, and you're replacing the two. How old is the third one?
The third one was put in in 2010, I believe. It was an emergency that went down.
Right, okay.
So, that one's fairly new.
Right. So, I'm just wondering, like, if there were to be a problem, if one of the boilers, you know, failed, would, how much, how much can the more recently-installed one handle?
Yeah, right now, the high schools each have three boilers. It normally takes one on a normal winter day. As it gets colder, it needs two, and then, as the demand calls, it needs the third. Lovelo High School is a different animal, because the boiler can't be rigged in right into the boiler room, it's got to be lifted up over the building and put into a courtyard. So, it's going to be a difficult project to get a boiler of that size and a crane to lift it up and over and rigged in, so it's an important project, but...
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Patton?
On the server room renovation, maybe the two of you could walk me through how the, I mean, I've been in there, how, this is, you're talking about the entire room where, you know, where the IT guys sit plus the technology, or just the technology?
No, no, no.
No, no, no. It's just the room that the servers are in.
Yeah.
Originally, when we moved in here, we had a small server room, back about, I guess it's about 10 years ago.
Yeah.
We had a workroom in front of the server room that we converted to a second server room when the Board of Ed took over the Munis system for both the town and the board. We needed the extra space. Since that time, we've put other equipment in that room, and, as you may recall, a couple years ago, we had Munis host us. We've done a lot of things to limit the amount of equipment that we needed on-prem, and to make it, you know, purchase more energy... purchase more energy-efficient equipment as well. But when we put the two rooms together as a server room, we basically have two seal, well, wall-mounted air conditioning units in each one. They both fail on a regular basis, and we've been told that they're actually undersized for the size of the rooms with the equipment that's intact there. You think about the board, you know, we're doing more and more with technology. So every time we add, like the security cameras, if we put one in the Board of Ed, we are adding another line that requires a connection in the server room.
Right, and obviously, there's more technology, there's more heat and...
Yeah, and the fire suppression system, they say lasts about 10 years. So ours is, you know, reaching way over that.
So this is just that, just the server room area. It's not touching where people work in the IT department.
Okay, so I guess my question goes to, the building or the area has a regular, like, central air conditioning system, right? But these two server rooms have an extra, I have one of these in my house, these wall, like a Mitsubishi or whatever.
Correct.
Units in. That's in addition to whatever ductwork for regular air conditioning that should already be in there.
The thing to remember is that we're part of the overall building, so that regular air conditioning gets turned off at night. It gets turned off on the weekends. So we are fully dependent on those wall units when the building itself is considered unoccupied and those main systems are off.
And we installed those wall units, like you said, about a dozen years ago?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The old one is, the original one in the back room was original equipment in 2002.
And they're just, are they failing, or they're just not powerful enough?
No, they're failing.
They're failing.
We are currently running on temporary AC with that pipe you saw in the photograph because the main unit in the front room has gone down for, as Tom said, the seventh time in this year.
Seven times in the past 12 months. So we have a service agreement with a company that runs the whole building, and they've been very responsive. But, you know, they're at a point even where they're saying, you know, "You need to do something."
So even if we just replace the air conditioning units?
We basically have replaced every part in the unit. I think the only thing that hasn't been replaced is the housing.
So there's basically nothing to do. We really just need to reconfigure the space to make it more...
It's the wrong installation now.
Flow, airflow.
You know, when the room was originally designed and built, it probably had, somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 ton, 300, three-and-a-half tons of cooling. We're now needing up to eight tons of cooling. So there's two Mitsubishi units trying to push out that tonnage, working together and in concert. And just when there's any issue at all, they fail. We're losing cooling to those rooms, equipment's heating up. We're frantically calling in a service company. We've got to a point where we've made them leave the temporary unit here in storage. So every time it goes down, we can roll it in and hook it up. It's just becoming too problematic, and it's too serious an area to leave like this.
No, we can't live without the equipment. I mean, we are the hub for the internet access for the entire district. So if we lose power in that room because the systems have gone down, because they're overheated, the whole district doesn't have internet.
I wasn't necessarily questioning the rationale of why to fix that. It just seemed like, do we need to spend $200,000 to renovate a whole room when maybe $50,000 worth of air conditioning, you know?
It's a lot more than that.
So it's more than that, right. That's what I was getting at.
The 200,000, about 12,000 of that is for the wall work. The rest is all air conditioning, fire suppression. It's expensive.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions on the whole book? But go ahead, Mr. Lovellow.
Thank you. To follow up on the IT question, what would it cost to outsource the room? I mean, we are constantly, I'm sure, doing server upgrades. We've got folks who are maintaining it. And with the connection speeds we have today and the federal funding that supplements the cost of that connection, are we better off, like we did for the Munis system, having a remote server in a more secure location?
You still need infrastructure to allow people to connect to those services, whether they're on-prem or off. We've pushed off Munis, we've pushed off Edulog, we've pushed off our file circulation system, a number of them. So the things that we have internally are either those systems that there is no hosted solution for, or those systems that we have, I'll call it traditional file storage and management. And we're in the process as a district of starting to use cloud services for that as well. But there's transition for that, and there's instructional practice change, and there's process and procedure and security. So we're, we constantly look at that. But we're, I would say, we're not positioned right now to, based on a server room issue, change everybody's life in the district to go off-prem.
And do we have server rooms in the various schools as well?
Not all the schools, but we do have equipment rooms in all the schools. At this point, we have servers at the secondary schools. The elementary schools are all serviced by central office because we virtualize those to consolidate.
And do we have capacity out in newer or more renovated schools that could host some of this for central office?
We've actually done that. We've pushed a lot of our facilities. We have a thing we call the universal drive that everybody accesses for things that everybody needs access to, to one of the high schools last summer. One of the other schools has the project drive that the kids do all their shared projects on, and that's at one of the high schools. Part of my operating budget includes our renegotiated wide-area network, and part of that is to give us redundancy on the internet, someone that's being funded through the E-Right grant you were referring to. Some of it is just because of negotiating the costs that are cheaper now for wide-area network and broadband as we negotiate the contract. So we will continue to look at where it makes sense to push things out to other facilities. We are concerned about this facility for a number of different reasons. Our experience with Sandy and being basically without power here for a really long time. So we've built in redundancies. We have outsourced email. So if our system here malfunctions, we have basically a DR system we can turn on in a couple of hours. We have obviously business continuity and backup and recovery through a third-party vendor off-prem who also is local as far as initial backup, but also has pops out in Massachusetts and California.
Okay, so it sounds like you've covered all those bases, which is good.
17 years, I hope I've done my job.
And I guess my other question gets to the system-wide electrical upgrades. So are we replacing dual outlet with quad outlet in the same location?
We're expanding basically from dual to quad.
But in that same footprint, we're basically doubling over?
Correct.
Okay, so it basically eliminates power strips?
Well, we don't use power strips now. It's basically improving the amount of power available so we can do some of those things I was talking about with projection.
And then in terms of what you're calling here the installation of the low-voltage cabling, that's just CAT 6 data?
It's just a CAT 6 data cable so we can talk to the projector through our network.
And you can't talk to those projectors wirelessly?
No. Well, some of the projectors, yes, but some of the older projectors, no. And we have approximately 700 projectors in the district. I don't think you want me to replace them all in a year because they cost about $1,000 bucks a piece.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, if there are no further questions on this booklet, the entire booklet will be up for a vote, as Dr. Tidal mentioned, at the first meeting in January. And it's important for us to move this along because we generally deal with it fairly quickly. Sometimes it can get bogged down as it goes through the rest of the system. So the sooner we get it in front of other bodies, the better off the district is. Thank you very much. Item C, first reading of Holland Hill educational specifications. That's enclosure number three. And Dr. Tidal, you want to lead us off?
Okay, so we've been busy. We are now trying to move forward on Holland Hill. And so there are a number of steps in the process. I've also included in this enclosure, it's actually enclosure five that's related, which is the timeline for the Holland Hill projects. And you'll see in that timeline that the first step here is to develop a initial funding request for the temporary classrooms and for design services. That is included in the Capital Projects booklet. We're getting to that in the next item. The next thing that has to happen is Board of Education approve educational specifications. These do not go anywhere else for approval. This is a Board of Ed-controlled document, and this is what we give to an architect at the point at which an architect is hired and say, "Go out and estimate what this is going to cost to build."
We also need it for the state reimbursement.
Yes, it's required for the state reimbursement as well. So some of the, the language in here is like, what's this doing in here? When Sal Morbeto drafts these, initially, he's got to make sure all the boxes are checked off from the state. So you're maybe wondering, for example, on page three, why is the mission and long-term goal of the district in there? And that's because it's required for the filing for the state. The project is really described in detail on page four. This, these ed specs are designed to bring Holland Hill to the 504 capacity. And the bullet points underneath there kind of explain what's involved with all of that in terms of additional space or space that we need to find within the existing footprint, including the cafeteria, and also including air conditioning. So the enrollment and proposed project capacity chart on page four is based on the most recent enrollment projections from NGT. But as you know, we are having projections revised by Malone McBroom, and their projections, when they're completed, we'll actually insert those in here when we submit it to the state because they want to see the most recent, the most recent ones. And so I think I'm going to presume that you've read them all, and I guess I'll entertain questions. Tom or Sal, is there something else we should point out in these?
You did a great job.
That's as brief as I can be. I agree. Well, this has been a lot of working on this, but that's, this is like the first step in a long road to a renovation.
And again, the responsibility of the Board of Education is to approve the ed or educational specs. These then get turned over to the town that presents these to the building committee that is eventually appointed by the Board of Selectment and RTM and says, "This is what you're supposed to build." The town is responsible for building, for bidding, for hiring the architect. The building committee does all of that work. And the next time we see it is when they have finished the building, and they want us to adopt it, and we say, "Have you met the ed specs?" Now, in between that time, from time to time, board members will ask, or the committee will want to update us on the project. We have a liaison that is appointed to serve on the committee, so we hear most of our updates from a member of the board who is the liaison. But if there are any substantial surprises or changes that require our attention so that we don't hear about them first time when the newspaper reports something that happened at a RTM meeting. But our job really is creating the ed specs and then accepting the building at the end. It's the town's job to build the building and to pay for it. Questions from the board on the ed specs, these again will be on the first meeting in January for approval and action. Questions from Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick.
When are we expecting to receive the updated enrollment numbers again? I'm sorry.
We're planning to have a full presentation from Malone McBroom at the February meeting. So we'll have them by then at the latest.
And then we would be able to, at that time, reconsider these, given the new numbers? Or is this going to be passed through before we have an opportunity to consider the new capacity numbers?
This is not likely to, I mean, the final step is the RTM and the building committee. Tom Cullen would drop dead if this thing got approved in January and February. It's just not going to happen. This is probably going to, what's the timetable for kind of final approval of this that would set the building committee in motion?
Well, I've got the timeline, which I can walk through on the other documents.
Right on the top.
Yeah.
There's a lot of time between March or February, when we hear the enrollment, and moving this through the system.
So we'll have the updated numbers before this?
Before any final votes are taken, yeah.
Not before the final votes on the ed specs?
No, no, not our final votes, but the final votes on the project moving forward.
Right.
Won't occur until later in the spring.
So I guess my question is, is would it make sense to get those numbers before we finalize the ed specs, since those numbers are probably pivotal in deciding what the appropriate ed specs would be?
You asking me?
Yeah, no, I'm asking...
No, I don't know who you're addressing that to. You're...
I guess I'm addressing to the board for thoughts. I'd like to get thoughts from the board on whether we think it relevant to get the updated enrollment figures to confirm that this is, in fact, what they say, or if the numbers are dramatically different, we should have that as a consideration before we formalize the space that we plan on building. Yeah, I just think that would be a logical step, to have the information before we approve.
Yeah, I'll give you my own perspective.
I'd like to hear comments from the board.
Yeah, I'll give you my own perspective. There's a long lag time between our approval of the ed specs and when the building actually starts taking shape from an architect's design point of view. There's just, there's a long lead time. If we delay our decision till, let's say, February we hear, March we vote, it's very unlikely that we would get the final resolutions passed by the RTM by the June 30th date. And then we'd lose a whole year of financing because you have to have these projects in by June 30th. So you really do have to keep these things moving along in order to meet that June 30th deadline date. My second rationale for me is that this is a project that has been a long time in the queue and was the subject of a lot of conversation. And we ought to show the community that we're prepared to move the Holland Hill project forward. Yes, there are new facts that may be known from time to time that will inform our thinking as well as building committee's thinking, but that should not stop us from starting the process, which is a long process. That's my own personal perspective.
One question, follow-up question to that is, is it possible to ask the consultants to accelerate their figures for Holland Hill specifically before the...
I'll ask them about that.
We can get them in January.
Right. The board always has the ability at any point to amend educational specifications. So it's not necessarily that it's the end of the line, but we will check with them. I'm going to look at Mr. Cummings out there, who is our liaison, to Malone McBroom, and we will see if they can accelerate the projection for Holland Hill.
Yeah, that would be appreciated.
Put that in the queue.
Other questions from the board, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Patton, Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
Yeah, through the chair to Dr. Tidal. Here in January, we have the architect being hired for the temporary portable classroom design. So if we delayed approving the ed specs, would that then hold that part of the process up?
Well, we will need to do that regardless. This is a, it's a very small part of it. No, that's not what would get held up. What would get held up is the rest of the project. And the funding for the temporary classrooms would be held up, but we've got to get a head start on the architect work in advance of this because we want to make sure that the temporary classrooms are in place for the first day of school in 2016. So that particular step would not be jeopardized, but the rest of it would be jeopardized.
Right, I understand the whole funding.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thanks.
Mr. Patton?
Patton. Comment first, I guess, then my question. So I guess if I'm to understand Ms. Lou McCormick's comment before, this was, I guess, waiting for the, for the information from the consultants. We're talking about doing the school as a 504 versus not, and that, somebody correct me if I'm wrong or misinterpreting that, but I thought we were kind of all under the assumption that, based on the enrollment projections that we have, even just next year's projections of going up another, you know, 20 kids, and usually the following year's projections are pretty close, that the school needs to be a 504. So I don't see how the enrollment projections would change it unless it would make it bigger than a 504, and Laura, help us if that happens. So my...
That's your comment. So your other question?
My question, through the chair to Mr. Cullen, is, I'm sure I'm not remembering these, these... My question, through the chair to Mr. Cullen, is, I'm sure I'm not remembering these ed specs that I've seen for other projects before. But do we have, when we're talking about things like space for one computer lab or one special education classroom, at what point do we know the size of those rooms and what we want the size of those rooms to be? Is that when we get a full architect plan?
That would be confirmed, but we have an idea now.
Okay.
You know, our regular general classrooms are 800 to 1,000 square feet OTPT. We have a list that we follow, and it's probably information from the state also.
And that's, but that specific information doesn't actually go into an ed spec that, you know, room X is roughly, you know, X size or holds X amount of students?
Right.
Do we have, we don't have that in the ed specs?
No.
Okay.
We don't put that kind of detail in.
Okay. So in terms of the laundry list of the rooms that we are either adding or saying that we need according to this document, again, to use the computer lab as an example, so we have an exact, we have a, whether it's from the state, a document reference based on, let's say, a school has X amount of students and X percentage, a computer lab needs to hold X percentage of students based on the capacity of the school. Is that how that works?
Correct. And if you remember, the MGT report, they did a capacity deficiency of each school. So they looked at a typical elementary school and they said, okay, you know, you have a capacity deficiency of one computer lab because you're doing computer lab training and teaching in the library. You don't have an actual room. You're doing OTPT on a stage in the cafeteria. That's not in a room. So they did a capacity deficiency study on that. And that's where a lot of this came from. Portable classrooms are considered a capacity deficiency. So those all get listed.
Okay. And that's-
And Mr. Patton, along the way, one of the steps is having the plans approved by the State Department of Education, and then of course, they have a, excuse me, they have an opportunity to compare what they consider their standards for classrooms and sizes and all the rest.
Including square footage.
Including square footage.
Versus what we got from like the MGT report.
With the plans that are being distributed. So there are a lot of eyes on here relative to that detail.
Okay. And then, Mr. Cullen, you mentioned one thing that I didn't see on here in terms of OTPT. Do we not want or do we not need an additional room for that?
Right.
What's the plan for that, I guess is my question.
Holland Hill may have an OTPT space. I don't know if the principal's here tonight and can answer that. So it might not be listed as a deficiency.
Right.
So do you want the principal to come forward?
All right, you want to come up?
Why don't you come forward?
I know that's obviously being used as swing space or something else right now.
Right.
So it would obviously go back to being an OTPT room, I guess is my-
Right, that's probably the answer, but we'll check.
So we currently do not have an OTPT space. It's being used by two special education teachers.
Right. So when we add the special education space, this will revert to OTPT space. That's how it plays out.
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Stick around, Laura. There's never no one that might be a question for you.
Mrs. Maxon Connolly, I think Ms. Pitco, did you have a follow-up or you just have a question?
Question.
Okay, so you're up, and then Mr. Calabrese.
A couple of things. First of all, to get back to the point regarding this being a 504 school, if you look at our latest enrollment numbers, which is the pink sheet we got in our Friday pack, at Holland Hill right now is at a 396, and yet with that, they are three classrooms away from needing 24 general ed classrooms. Never mind what the situation is there right now, but if they had that structure in place, if you look at kindergarten, they're a couple of kids away from needing that room. And then all you have to do, and what we heard from the other town bodies and what we had as a discussion here, is that notion of having swing space. You know, you have something that goes wrong in a classroom, you know, ceiling issues, an issue at another school, and that we're needing some space in the district, again, that vital swing space, with just 396 kids, they're already using almost the general ed classroom space of the 504 school. So the enrollment projections just simply don't tell the story. I mean, you look down at North Stratfield, similar story. Now, they've got 18 more students, and yet once again, in first grade, they're very close to having, you know, we're being at the number where they should be moving up another section. So again, that limited swing space and yet a full 90 students away from that magical 504 number we think of. And so we can't think of 504 as we need to be close to that number to think that that type of a construction is warranted. Again, I do think the topic's been thoroughly covered. It can't hurt, you know, if somebody's just tuning in now to know why we're making this decision. But again, you just look at that 396 and it presents the compelling story right there. Some questions I had about the ed specs. One thing is that at one place it says install, this is on page, I'm sorry, through the chair to Mr. Cullen, on pages four and five, mentions the new air conditioning throughout the facility. And then up in the, no, I was reading that wrong. So when it says the following specifications apply only to the new, okay, I apologize. I misread that. I thought, I saw AC on here also. Sorry about that. Page five then, strictly, the encapsulation is not acceptable for hazardous material. And yet I know we've talked about that. I thought it was at Ludlow High School that that was. I was wondering what's different here.
I think generally we want to state that encapsulation isn't acceptable. We'd like to remove it if we could. In any case, when we find hazardous material, we'd like to remove it. So we'd like to make a statement in the ed spec that the board would recommend we try and remove any hazardous material if we can. Encapsulation should be a second thought. It should be something that's worked out with the federal U.S. EPA, DEEP, depending on each situation.
Okay, but in using language like this, which is, I believe, fairly definitive, are we setting ourselves up for a situation, again, obviously, we never know what happens till you start breaking into walls, of this possibly having to come back to us saying, okay, well, in this case, safety-wise, it'd be okay, health-wise, it'd be okay, and financially, it would be preferable, you know, in order to meet our budget? Are we looking then that we might have to look at this again because of this wording?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I think it's driven by what our consultants find on the site, and we report to the Connecticut State DEEP and the federal government, U.S. EPA, and they drive it with the modification plan for the project.
Then can you refresh my memory again? Why did we, why was that the decided course of action in the other building project?
I don't remember that unless Sal does.
Okay, sorry.
You're speaking about Ludlow-
Right.
High School. The reason that the encapsulation path was chosen, and it's not everywhere that encapsulation is being used. Cost effectiveness and because of the level of risk, encapsulation was deemed by EPA to be acceptable. This particular line is more geared towards asbestos-containing materials being encapsulated, where that has been a problem in previous building project.
Okay.
And it's not a correct choice for the district long-term. We have the new facet with PCB remediation and encapsulation is kind, it's a separate issue where encapsulation might be more palatable in the long run. Basically, at the end of the job, when the board accepts the project, there can be any one of these bullet points that might not be exactly adhered to. It's the general understanding that this board, along the process, will see the plans and specifications, approve them. That's one of the steps before we go to the state for reimbursement. So the board is being informed of the deviations theoretically through the process, and you also have a liaison watching the process and reporting back to you. If it was a deviation, say, instead of having one of the bullet points is five general classrooms, and the building committee said, yeah, but we're only doing two. Well, plans come here. You can, if the board's not in agreement with that, you can refuse to accept the plans and stop the process there.
Right. Okay.
Again, when we approve this project, the state process requires the approval to come back through us on at least two or three occasions along the process because the state requires us to re-approve. So that's, I think, what Mr. Morabito is referring to. You have other questions?
I just had one other issue, and I had references to Dr. Title and said I'd bring it up tonight, was my interest in adding a sink to each of the general ed classrooms. And I don't know, because I have no clue about cost to some of the classrooms beyond that, but for multiple safety issues, including basic hand washing and considering potential lockdown situations, that was, I can't think how it wouldn't be a positive. And obviously, I'm thinking as well of the allergy policy and the hand washing that has, you know, arisen as a need with that. But for various aspects of safety issue, that was one thing I had wanted to throw out there that I would have been interested in seeing in this. And yes, I would believe that would be a very good precedent to set for any future building projects.
Thank you. Was it a follow-up, or shall I go to Ms. Pitco and then, did you have a follow-up on the same subject?
I had a follow-up, but I'll wait.
Will you wait? Ms. Pitco?
To the chair to Dr. Title, my question is about the portables. Looking at the current capacity of Holland Hill and the current enrollment of Holland Hill, is three portables for the next two to three years going to be enough if the enrollment increases? And second part to the question, do we have security measures in place, part of this, for a fence or something? Has that been considered?
Okay, a couple, okay, two questions. I'll take them one at a time. So there's presently three portables on the site. The plan is to add two additional portables for a total of five to be in effect for the beginning of the next school year. So that funding, when we get to the funding part of this, the part of the funding request that I'm recommending that the board move forward to the town bodies includes the funding for the two temporary classrooms that would be leased only for the length of the project. And then once the project is completed, all five portables would be removed. So we'd be adding two portables, which will relieve the immediate space crunch that we have at the school. On the security, in the security package that was approved last year and bonded by the town, we included funds to fence in all the temporary classrooms through the district because of the security issue. And that project is still in process. So it's just become more difficult. It's had to be rebid a couple times, and it's still in the works. So we will be fencing in all the portables throughout the district as soon as we can get that through the system and get a bid awarded and so forth.
Thank you. Mr. Calabrese?
Thank you. First of all, again, thank you for putting this together for us so quickly. I do appreciate that. I know the rest of the board members do as well. My first question was about the portables, the number and the timeline on those, which Ms. Pitco just asked, so I'm very pleased that that got taken care of. The next one was about the PCB's possibility or asbestos possibility or any other thing that possibly could come up as we know. You know, I see in the current details on page 12 here that we've got a contingency and escalation portion in the budget of $138,000. Does that go towards any abatement or anything that would possibly come up? And if not, where would we expect to see that later on?
Okay, so you're jumping ahead, but that's fine. So there was a placeholder number put into the waterfall for this project. One of the issues that we need to address is that because of the uncertainty you talk about, because we've had too many surprises, particularly with respect to hazardous materials, PCBs and so forth, that putting a full number together on just a conceptual design has just, doesn't give us the degree of certainty, I think, that we want or that the town wants. And so what we're asking in this process is that the funding be sufficient so that the architectural work is almost three-quarters of the way done and all of the environmental testing is completed. And once all that is done, then the building committee comes forward to the town and says, this is the number. So they're not necessarily going to hit that number that's in there. So they may discover, that's what this process will do, this process that we're outlining here will get us over a large hump in terms of knowing exactly what our exposure is to PCBs before any final number is agreed upon.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then just one last question, because I'm, obviously, I think most of us have gotten emails on it. Was there any consideration to fast-tracking this through the state for this project? Because I mean, right now, we're talking of a timeline of possibly, you know, anywhere between 2017 to 2019.
This is a fast-track. Believe it or not, this is as fast as you can do it. As a matter of fact, meeting the timetable that I have in there, which is a final, final fall of 2019 opening, requires that the town move very quickly upon approval of all of this to not only approve the, what I'll call the down payment money on this, but also to get a building committee in place and approve the charge for the building committee and move it along. What is being fast-tracked is the temporary classrooms. This timeline allows us to get funding in place, in an ideal world, as soon as the end of February, which would enable us to bid the temporary classrooms and give any installer plenty of time to get them in place for next year. So that element is being fast-tracked, but there's not a whole lot you can do. This is, I know it seems amazing, this is fast. And this does require some cooperation from the town to keep on this schedule. So I mean, the fact that you're getting the ed specs now-
Yes.
-you know, fast. And I have to talk to the first selectman about getting the selectman to move quickly. But all the town bodies are going to have to cooperate if we're going to even hold to this schedule.
Okay. Thank you. Again, I do appreciate how fast you guys were able to put this together. So thank you.
And a follow-up on Mr. Calabrese's comment. One of our expectations as board members and as parents is that we advocate on behalf of our children. And so this project will only move through at the timetable that we want it to move through if board members show up at meetings and other people show up at meetings and remind all of the people along the way that need to weigh in on this of the importance of moving the project ahead as fast as possible. Other questions that people have on the ed specs? Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you. My first question is, how many existing brick-and-mortar classrooms do we have? We have a capacity of 315. So does that mean we have 15 classrooms now?
Twenty-three with the portable.
Twenty.
Twenty, and one of them's an art room.
Yep. Twenty, and one of them is an art room.
So we have 20 right now. So if we were to, I'm just trying to understand kind of the basic math here. So we've got 20 classrooms, and based on page number two, we're saying in order to do our, you know, it says quote-unquote 24 classroom model, the average is 21 is used. So 21 times the 24 gets us our 504.
Correct.
So we have 20 times our 21. So why do we not consider this a 420 versus a 315 if we have 20 classrooms? Am I, does that make sense?
So the rooms that we're currently missing is we're currently missing a music room, a computer lab.
Oh, no, I'm not debating that at all. I'm just talking about the number of classrooms.
So I think that's factoring in. So some of those areas are on carts?
So one of the answers that has frequently been given is when you get into the deficiencies, there may be 20 classrooms, but to the extent that some of them are portable classrooms, they don't count within the quote "functional" capacity because they're not considered permanent, adequate, appropriate classrooms.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I asked the question, though, what were the existing brick-and-mortar classrooms? Is that 20 with portables or without portables?
Without.
Without portables. So I think that answers that, that responds to that comment. So we've got 20 existing classrooms. So we must be using classrooms for something other than students.
That's right.
Or other than classes. I think. I'm trying to figure it out, please.
Please respond.
So out of the 20 brick-and-mortar classrooms, 18 in the building are used for general ed classrooms.
Okay.
One room is used by five- So, out of the 20 brick-and-mortar classrooms, 18 in the building are used for general ed classrooms.
Okay.
One room is used by five staff members, two special education teachers, a math and science teacher, a language arts specialist, and a speech and language pathologist, sharing one full-time classroom. That's the 19th classroom. The 20th classroom is the art room.
Got it. 20th is the art room. Okay, that makes more sense. Thank you.
And it also makes sense when you come and tour, too, so you're always welcome.
And I did, and I did. But I was trying to understand kind of the number. So, we're adding five general ed classrooms per this. And the numbers, I mean, if I were to say our functional capacity, our capacity right now is 315, I think that's probably not a valid number, based on what we just heard.
That is.
So, help me do the math, sorry. 20 times 21.
I know that building capacity came from the MGT report of the existing brick-and-mortar building. But I know what you're doing. You're taking the number of classrooms, multiplying it by the student.
I'm using your assumptions. So if I take the 18 general ed classrooms that we have, and then multiply it by the 21, we come up with 378. So our capacity is somewhere in that range. And I'm not disputing we need more room. I'm just saying, the way this is laid out makes it difficult for me to understand, because the way I did the math when I looked at this, is I said, "You're asking for five general ed classrooms. You have a 504, and you have an existing capacity of 315, which means you need 189 more seats," which says to me, "We actually need to add nine classrooms, not five classrooms."
We actually are adding more than five classrooms.
I, we're adding five general ed classrooms.
Right. So what we actually did was, we sat there with the floor plan, and we said, "If we build a school with 24 brick-and-mortar general ed classrooms, and has a general music room, and an instrumental music room, and enough room for special education, how many classrooms will we need to add after we take the portables out?" And this is what ends up being needed.
Right.
So remember, some of the deficiencies, we've got classrooms there that normally would be used by somebody else. They're being, people are being pushed out into non-traditional spaces. So the, you can always put more kids in than the listed capacity, it just drains the system and people end up in bad, in bad places. But we literally took the floor plan and said, "All right, we got a 504, we got Stratfield Schools a 504. They've got 24 classrooms, they've got, you know, an art room, a music room, an instrumental music room, you know, a computer lab, and so forth. What would it take to make Holland Hill of the same capacity?" And you look at Stratfield, and you look at the other 504s, they all follow the same numbers. And that's how it plays out.
And I'm not saying five general ed is an incorrect number.
Right, right.
I'm saying mathematically, the table doesn't work, because it would lead you to believe you did nine classrooms. So, that's what I was trying to determine.
Well, if you look at the addition.
That's a general comment that you made.
We are asking for nine. We're not asking for nine general classrooms, but we're asking for nine spaces.
Right. I understand that. And a 504 has 24 classrooms, plus all those spaces anyway. So, and we have correctly 18 general ed classrooms now. So based on your 21, we have 378, not 315, I believe. I, too, like Ms. Lou McCormick, am interested in seeing at the next meeting the new projections. And the only reason I say that is, you know, Mr. Calabrese brings up a very good point, is it a way to fast-track it? But if this is fast-track, you know, I guess it is. But we basically, according to the projections we're using, have the addition coming online as we start to have a decline in enrollment in the school. Just pointing that out. So it will be interesting to see what those numbers are. I believe we've had McBride, McBroom engaged since July of last year, so they should be well along their way, I hope, to getting us at least numbers for one school. If we go to page five.
You said last year, but it was actually July of this year.
You're right, my mistake. Yeah, you're correct. Six months they've been here. I'm into next year already. Single-member membrane. Once again, we say no single-member membrane for the roof system here. And we just did that at Ludlow, I believe, correct? So once again, I'm wondering why we're using definitives like that, if in fact, you told us several months ago that that single membrane was equivalent to all the double membranes.
Fairfield Ludlow was a specific case because of the coverage of the PV system on the roof. It was a unique evaluation for that building. This building has no PV system projected in its future. I'm not saying that.
And you may want to say what PV means.
Solar panel.
Photovoltaic.
Photovoltaic system on the roof, a solar system for electricity. The coverage of the system on the Ludlow roof was extensive, and it was a judgment call that that added an equivalency to the double membrane, multi-layered roof. Best bet for the district, best bet for the district is a multi-layered system for longevity.
Okay. And then, in turn, Ms. Maxime Canelly brought up the point here on encapsulation is not acceptable. I would move that that's changed to encapsulation is not recommended. So I will make that as a formal motion if I need to, or if you can incorporate that.
No, not tonight. This is a presentation tonight. It's approval next, at the first meeting in January, so the, any action would be taken place then.
Perfect. If I move to page six, the top, mechanical systems. The first bullet point, separate independent commissioning of mechanics electrical plumbing systems to include airflow balancing contractor hired directly by the building committee, not the construction manager or design team, and reporting directly to the building committee and Fairfield Public School System Central Office. Why were you explicit there? We had issues in the past where it was hired by the GC.
Independence means that it can't be hired by the GC or the design team. They have to be fully independent and be able to speak when there is a problem. The rest of it, reporting directly to the building committee and Central Office is, in the past, there's been communication problems. So we want to be part of the commissioning team so that we're aware of the issues as they're developed and as they are solved.
Okay. So this is a new bullet versus prior ed specs?
No, it's been, it's been on the past two or three ed specs.
Okay. So, but it's learning from kind of our past experience.
The first half of the bullet is pretty standard. You've added that last phrase?
No, that's been on the past couple of ed specs.
Okay, very good. I think I have one more. I guess that's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time, guys.
Okay. I think just about every board member has asked a question at one point. Can you be the final questioner, and then we'll move along?
I just want to ask you more, an answer to Mr. Llewellyn's math question.
Do you speak? Well, okay.
I believe Mr. Llewellyn was questioning the, you know, according to the ed specs, the current capacity of the school at 315, when you were doing math with 18 classrooms at 378. If you take the existing map and you actually allocate for each one of these general classroom rooms, and you give one to special ed, and one to art, and one to music, I'm not sure I did the math a second ago, I'm not sure if I had a computer one or not, but it basically breaks down the K through five type of classrooms at 15. And 15 classrooms times 21 is your 315, and that's where he's getting the number.
But we just said there were 18.
There are 20, there are more rooms than that, but there are.
But in the new building, some of those have to be used for computer, right?
And in the, in the existing building there.
And that's how they did the math.
That number does not include, that 18 does not include a room for music, and does not, let's see, is there an art room on here? So, at any rate, I just did it twice, and it comes to 15 K to five classrooms.
We have 18 general ed classrooms and usage general ed classrooms now.
No, there are actually, there.
So.
I can show you the map, but that you can.
That, perhaps you can discuss after the meeting.
I thought that would be a simple answer to your question.
So, this will be on the, this will be on the agenda for January approval. If you have other questions related to that or anything else, feel free to contact Dr. Title. We're now at item D, the Fairfield Board of Education proposed capital projects, and those are Exhibits Four and Five.
Well, why don't we stay on Holland Hill for a minute, unless you want a break and we can talk about a roof?
Yeah, lead us through however you think.
All right, let's stay with Holland Hill, because I want to explain the, how this funding request ties into the timeline. So basically, what we're asking here is for enough money for the two temporary classrooms to go in right away, plus enough architectural, engineering costs, and environmental consulting to really get a very, very confident number for a full project. The, and so, there are basically about four phases to the way architects go and develop projects. And at each phase, there's a cost estimate that's done for that. At each phase, the cost estimate gets closer and closer to the real number. And we had previously gone in for projects based on the first phase, which is conceptual And that has turned out to be, in some cases, not all that accurate because of so many surprises are found when you get on these sites and these old buildings, particularly with PCBs, asbestos, and the like. So in order to get a better number on this project, we're suggesting that the town put up architects, a substantial amount of architect's cost upfront. Now, this is not extra money that won't be used, because an architect would have to go through all these steps anyways. So it's really more of a down payment. We're not losing any time, and we're not losing the money. But we need a building committee to monitor it, and we need to get going on it, so that in about a year or so, this can go for the full funding request and have a really high confidence level in the, in the number that we're asking for. Because I think the town is getting a little tired of some projects that come in, and then they go in over budget, and what can we do about it? So, the second phase, if you go through this document, the architect does conceptual designs, and then they do what's called schematic design, and all of that gets estimated. And then, they get all the way through into the next phase, which is design development. Once the design development is done, at that point, or at least halfway through design development, the chances of the project going off the rails are quite small relative to the way we've been doing it. So this gets us all the way through, and this work would have to happen no matter what. On the timeline, the full project funding actually wouldn't be sought until March of 2017. So it's about, it would be the next cycle. But at that point, the project is like three-quarters designed, and so that it proceeds along. So whether you do this with conceptual design, and then you ask for the money, or whether you do it this way and ask for the money, the timeline is identical. So this doesn't slow the project down or speed it up, but it gives us a higher confidence that the number that the building committee goes ahead and asks for is much closer to what the real construction cost will be. So, we reached out to several architects to get pricing on if we were to hire you to do this work, what would you estimate this to be? And that's captured in the request. So, that's that project. And then, Tom, can you talk about the roof, and then we'll just, I guess, open it up? So, over to you on Fairfield Woods.
You're an expert on roofs. Do you want to talk about the roofs?
I could talk about it, but, you know, I don't want to get overly excited. It's getting warm up here. I don't want to pass out from the excitement.
Okay. Thank you. Fairfield Woods Middle School Roof Replacement. This is a series of 18 roof areas. They're at the end of their useful life. This is a school building roof that is, warranty is expiring this year, 2015. Normally, with our good preventive maintenance program, we look to get an extra five years. This roof is failing very quickly and needs to be replaced. What I provided for you was a write-up on all of this. This will require a building committee, because we will be able to seek reimbursement. You can only seek reimbursement on a roof if the warranty has expired, so this will expire in time, and we'll be able to get reimbursement on it. So we want a building committee, we want to file the proper paperwork and get reimbursement. If you turn to page six, you'll see that what we call an infrared study that was done by a roofing company. This is where they take a picture. The top picture is a photograph of the roof from the sky. The picture below it is the infrared shot. Every place that there's a yellow circle, yellow arrow, and if you see the light-shaded areas, that's where there is wet insulation sitting in the, under the membrane. So we know the roof is failing, it's holding water, and needs to be replaced. We then walked around up on top of it, if you turn the pages seven and eight, and you'll see just large masses that have been patched. You can see the close-ups where it's bubbling and failing, and we're very concerned. We're actually working with our roofing preventive maintenance contractor now to even do some minor repairs to get us through the winter. The issue will be not so much when it rains, but when it snows, and the snow turns to ice, and it sits on that roof. It'll work its way into all these crevices and leak. So this is an important project to move forward.
And this was in our long-range plan. You've seen it, and it's in at this number. So this will not be a surprise in terms of the waterfall.
And we provided you on page three and four and five, a breakdown of the cost from a professional contractor. Silk Town Roofing has been getting a lot of the low bids in town. We're very happy with them. They worked with us to give us a proposal, and we have an engineering architectural price for the documentation and drawing work and specifications for bidding, for a total of $3 million.
If there's any questions I can help you.
Questions from board members on the roof. Again, it's a building committee project, so eventually, one of you will have the enjoyable experience of looking at this. Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Carnell.
Yeah, I guess that was the one question I had. I can't remember what the cutoff is for the SBSBC. It's, it's less than $3 million, and that's why you would want to do it with the building committee?
No.
So would that be an option, or you think it would be, it would make more sense to have a building committee?
No, it could be. I mean, it's the first selectman's decision, but the Special Project Standing Building Committee has done roofs for us and done a good job.
Right, yeah. So that could be one possibility, as opposing, as opposed to, so you wouldn't really necessarily have to form a building committee then, because then you'd be using the SBSBC members.
That would be great, yes.
So, that could be another option.
And we have a liaison on that committee.
Yes.
Ms. Carnell.
Just if memory serves me, wasn't this the same school that was having problems with the air conditioning making noise and disturbing the block next to them?
Yes, that was on the new addition that was put up.
Right, so that won't, I believe that was fixed or altered. So that won't be touched in any way, which would cause the noise back.
No, that's not one of the 18 roofs.
Right, I just wanted to make sure, we don't want to bring the noise back.
Anything else from board members on this? Mr. Patton.
Just quickly through the chair to Mr. Collin. Was the redoing or the replacement of this roof considered at all during the original woods renovation, or it just wasn't time, or was going to be too much?
No, it was still under warranty. We were doing PM work. We had some big failures around the individual air conditioning units in one of the wings. Each one was put in later in the classroom. We were having some leaks around those. But roofs are funny. They can, they can usually last a long time. We can get five extra years past the warranty with good PM. But all roof, good roofing companies and contractors will tell you, when it does start to fail, it can go real fast. And that's what we're happening.
So before, it wasn't even considered to replace at that point, because the warranty was still in existence, and it was fine?
Correct. Well, it wasn't fine, but at that time, we were only seeing 12 to 15 leaks around these air conditioning units in a different wing. We had a couple other small areas we were watching and doing some repairs. You know, generally, the PM contractor not only just makes repairs, but he reports on the roof. So he'll report to us certain areas, how it's doing, where it's failing, what he recommends we do, and then he gets to a point where it's almost out of control now. He's got so many areas.
And how many reports or? And how many reports or incidents of roof leaks or failures did you have last year?
I don't have the count, but we can get that for you if you want. It's a lot.
If you did this six or seven years ago, you wouldn't get any state reimbursement either because it's still under warranty.
Yep.
Is that it? Mr. Patton? Okay, so we'll put this on the agenda for action at the beginning of the January, the first January meeting. And again, if you have any detailed questions that you have between now and then, feel free to talk to Dr. Title.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Next.
Are we done? Do we need to go to the next page?
I don't know what you mean. We have two projects. We talked about Holland Hill and we talked about the roof.
Oh, I thought you were coming back to Holland Hill, you said. Because we didn't talk about temporary classrooms. We didn't talk about day staff and the like.
I thought we talked about Holland Hill quite a bit, so therefore I thought that all the board members had asked whatever questions they wanted to. But again, if you have more detailed questions on Holland Hill, you know, ask them in between time. And also, of course, we'll be having debate about what to do with Holland Hill, the 504 capacity and whatnot in January.
So, what is this concept of day staff?
Oh, that, in order to keep this project on a good timeline, I'm asking that the first selectmen appoint a building committee that can meet more frequently and during the day, if possible, to speed things along. So that the initial building committee that works on this project through the first, say, nine months to a year, to get it to design development can be more nimble and can meet more frequently, can interview architects for a full day, and can move the project along. And then, at that point, more people can be added to the building committee. So, the concept of day staff meeting, a building committee that has the capability of meeting, you know, say, in the afternoon as opposed to meeting once a month at night, doesn't mean that it's simply going to be comprising, you know, employees of the town or something. It just means people have a daytime availability that will move the thing along much faster.
So, the composition will be not dissimilar to what it is today. It'll just be focused about the ability.
It's up to the first selectmen and the selectmen and then the RTM get to pick it. We really don't have any jurisdiction over that. My conversations with the first selectmen have been to try to find some experienced building committee members who've been through this project before, who could commit the time to it and at least get this thing off the ground. Doesn't mean that you couldn't have, you know, so many experienced people or some citizens beyond it as long as they have the ability to make the time commitment. But it's really not our job. I'm just emphasizing in this timeline that if it's a building committee that meets once a month for an hour, we will not be able to hold to this timeline.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And then in the, on page five, under day staff, under the pros and the cons, we talk about temporary portable classrooms are eligible for state reimbursement. I know we talked about that a couple of meetings ago. Is that something that has been vetted through bond council that we, that we can bond them or is this going to be financed separately?
Well, the town would have to decide what they want to put on a 20-year bond or whatever. We, again, what, the eligibility for state reimbursement is a separate question for how the town wants to finance it.
Okay, but if we look at page 10 of the book, it, I think, says something slightly different. It says, "This project is eligible for reimbursement through the State Department of Education Bureau of School Facilities, except for the cost of the portables themselves."
We think if we wrap it in this way, we can capture the whole thing. Because we're going to build this in as part of not just the temporary classrooms. If we did it by themselves, I think we'd be out of luck. But because they're part of this larger project and we're putting this other funding together for an architect, we think we can get this through the state. We're going to try it.
What you can do is you fill out a form that's called an EDO 49 for the project initial funding in the portable classrooms. Then, once we get approval to move on funding on the whole project, we can file a revision. It's an EDO 49R. So, there is a possibility we could capture the reimbursement.
Yep.
Okay, so.
In the grand scheme of things, it's not a huge amount of money.
It's just a question.
Yeah.
Because I know before we talked about them being that way and now we're not.
Right. I think that by, you know, by wrapping this all in, we definitely maximize the chances of that. But there'll be all kinds of stuff in this project that's not eligible. We don't even know about it now. This will be a rounding error.
And then the only other comment I had is if we look at the pink sheets that give us the enrollment, there are currently three kindergarten classes in the facility. As opposed to adding two portables, have we explored the concept of having next year's kindergarten class and potentially the following years if necessary, attend Riverfield and then when they move to first grade, they go back to their, to their normal school? But for that first year, we could take advantage of the extra 100 seats we have at Riverfield, save those smaller children from having to kind of live through the construction. And they'd still be part of their own home school because in first grade, they'd transition back. It would just be that kindergarten class.
This is an idea that you've advanced before. Several board members aren't on, all that keen on it.
Actually, I've never brought up the kindergarten class before.
And you've brought up moving things so that you could use Riverfield capacity. At the end of the day, those are debate points that will be brought up in January.
Just thought I'd bring it up. So, if we could explore, you know, if there's a cost associated with that, that'd be great.
Mrs. Gerber.
Just one thing to keep in mind is that Holland Hill does start earlier than all the other elementary schools. So, that could be problematic. I mean, in addition to many other ones, because this topic actually did come up with Osborne Hill years ago, and it was not feasible.
See, and I think the fact that Holland Hill starts earlier could be an advantage here because the, all the available classrooms at Riverfield are down in the wing.
You can have your last comment, but we'll debate in January.
Chair, to ask one question.
Please do.
To Dr. Title. Does the Board of Education, my mic, does the Board of Education approve the final dollar amount for the project? Because that's the one thing, I don't think we do.
You do not.
Just the Ed specs.
The Ed specs. And once you turn this over to a building committee with this down payment money, for lack of a better way to put it, the building committee carries the ball from here on out in terms of what the costs are. The one thing the Board of Ed does approve, you'll see it on page four, is the construction documents. That's the last phase. And you may remember having this before where they come in with stacks like this and give you a whole presentation on it. And that's when you say, "Will these construction documents meet the Ed specs?" And they say, "Yes," and then we move on. But that's, that's it.
A, B, C, D. That's what I was thinking of.
Correct. But that is, that approval is after the full funding for the project. The full funding for the project is not, does not come back to the Board of Ed.
The Board of Selectmen is the first body that sees that financially.
That's correct.
This body does approve the long-range facilities plan that have placeholder members in for various projects. And depending on the level of architectural work, those placeholders sometimes are good and sometimes they're just simply that placeholder. Please make this the last comment. We do need to get through the rest of the agenda. Mrs. Lou McCormick.
This is just related to the last page in this timeline attachment. I was just looking at the cons that you have listed here and I just wanted to understand them a little bit better. So, one of them says, "Lack of ownership of the design scope by the permanent team because it was not developed by them." So, this is implying that there's a permanent team that will replace the day staff team?
They'll actually be added to it beyond the way we've got this designed. In other words, we start out with a smaller, more nimble building committee that's going to get all the way through this phase of design. And at that point, if the first selectmen wants to and the RTM approves, they would add people to it. They'd be coming into the project later. And they would not have been involved in the whole development up to that point. So, they'd be coming into a project that's pretty well along. That doesn't necessarily have to happen. There's no rule that says a building committee has to be of a certain size. That's completely up to the first selectmen or the RTM to decide. So, we were allowing for a smaller team to really crank this thing forward as quickly as possible. But if people felt that there was not enough of a building committee, not enough other members on it, that they could be added at a later time. That's the concept. But that's completely up to the first selectmen, I mean, the Board of Selectmen and the RTM. That's the process for building committee membership.
Because then that leads you to the next bullet point, which says, "Lack of citizen input on consultant selection and initial design steps." So, does that imply that there wouldn't be citizens on this day staff building committee?
No, there could be, but there won't be as many as there have been on other building committees. But again, that's not our decision. Those problems could be corrected if the first selectmen can find enough people to be on the building committee and they can meet during the day. It's not a problem. But that's one of the hazards of saying, "We're going to meet during the day. We're going to meet more often." You won't have as many citizens that are going to step up and do it. It's hard enough to recruit people to building committees as it is right now.
So, then the implication is that really it is staff. You're talking about district staff or is it town staff primarily? You're not expecting regular citizens?
No, it's, I think it could be a mix of people. I think they're, I think he's looking for people that have been on building committees before that can commit to during the day. He might put somebody on from the town staff, the building department. I doubt he'll put on a member of the Board of Ed staff on the committee. But again, it's not our decision.
No, I understand. It's interesting that you highlighted it. Like, I wouldn't have thought about it.
Right. I just think, you know, when you're going to have a smaller building committee, they're going to meet more frequently. They're going to meet more times during the day. You know, the, you're sacrificing something to get the speed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, on to item E, discussion on Board of Education bylaw amendments. The amendments that got put forward in time for inclusion in the packet were outlined in a memo that is, was part of the packet dated December 3rd. Because this is a favorite topic of debate every year, can I, I would like to suggest to the board that the debate occur when we're going to take action. And I'd ask the sponsors of these to not have the debate on them, but to state what the purpose of, why they're advancing this bylaw amendment. And then we'll have the debate on them at the, at the January meeting when we move to approve them. And so, I'll just take them in the order that they were presented, which is number one. Ms. Carnell, you had presented a amendment, so if you could talk about the purpose.
I think the purpose is plain and simple that there's, we all want things on an agenda. An agenda can only, you know, has to be limited because of time constraints. And I think if three board members would like something added to the agenda, it should be acknowledged and respected by the chair and the rest of the board.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just want to add. And obviously, there's times that the agenda can't be finished for unexpected reasons or things run longer. So, again, out of respect to the board members, it should be carried to the next one.
Thank you. Any questions that are kind of fact-based or any comments on the, on this that would be helpful to Ms. Carnell as she advances this item? Again, not as part of debate, but as part of clarification questions. Ms. Lou McCormick.
I don't know if this is so much a question as so much as a fact-based comment regarding this and that it is, seems like a standard practice within many Boards of Ed, after having spoken with many districts, that if three board members and often in many districts, two board members, request an item be placed on the agenda, that it would be placed on the agenda. And when I had noted it within a conference that, you know, it was not necessarily the practice, I think there was a look of huge surprise that we do not do this as a standard protocol.
Thank you. The second item is sponsored by Mr. Llewellyn. You want to talk about the purpose of that?
Sure. This is an amendment to, basically, last year's amendment where the decision was made that in order to make an information request, that the request needed to come from the board and it needed to go to the board for a vote. There is no mechanism right now to really going to the board for that vote. And I think that what this basically says is that if board members request information, that if the information is deemed by the superintendent and his staff to not require amount of time, then I would like to put on a reasonable amount of time to provide that information. If, in fact, that information's not provided within that amount of time, there must be a reason that it's not. And it should probably come to the board for, for approval. So that we can, I think we need to clarify the language that was added last year.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Llewellyn, I'd only make two comments. The third line of, no, the second line of the red thing that says, ends at the end of the line, end of that line when it says days, then the request will added to. You may want to look at the Senate structure of your amendment. Again, these are proposed. Until they are moved and seconded, they're not officially amendments. And so, you have time to reword this if you choose. And second, only once did we address this where we were prepared to put an item on the agenda, again, at your request. And then you modified your request so that then Dr. Title was able to say yes.
Correct.
So, we were prepared to put it on the agenda as required.
And the rationale, that's a perfect example. I'm glad you brought that up. The reason I'm putting in a time period here is because that request was, was it March or April? And I think you and I sat and reviewed those documents in September, I think, or maybe, was it October? I don't recall. We'll have to look at our calendars.
No, I was commenting more about, there is a process to get it on the agenda.
I understand. But.
So, again, we can debate the pros and cons of it.
Very good.
In January. Any questions of Mr. Llewellyn on facts or comments based on the wording? Seeing none. Mrs. Maxon Carnell, you have amendment number three.
And four and five.
Well, let's deal with three at the moment.
Number three is, one, cleaning up and two, an addition, which actually came out of policy. As the, from Ms. Carnell brought our attention to, that we didn't actually have language included regarding the Fair TV representative that we have to the Cable Advisory Council. So, in the first line where it says, "Or public," it is not because the board would be looking to add a member of the public to be the representative to the Board of Health, Parks and Rec, or CES. But it has been in the, again, this is obviously very recent. Fair TV doesn't have that long a history. But that it was a member of the Fair TV Commission who has served in that capacity. And thus, I had written, suggested the change of "or public," specifically with a nod towards D, the voting member of the CAC 2. And then the second change is something that in four years, and now this is my fifth time looking at this, I had never noticed that D should not have been there. We don't put a voting member on building committees. And so, that that more properly belonged down there at the bottom where the chairman shall report members of the board to act as liaisons to the following bodies. So, I'm not trying, I wasn't changing anything. I was making it more accurate. And that's amendment three.
Okay. Comment on number three for the board. The Cable Advisory Committee moves their meetings around in a larger geographic area than just Fairfield. And so, therefore, sometimes, the first time we became aware that we had the right to appoint somebody according to their bylaws, there was no board member that really had an interest in serving, especially considering the timeframe of the meetings and the distances they would have to travel. I mentioned this as a vacancy at the last meeting. No board member has come forward and says, "Oh, that's exactly what I'd like to do." I have asked the Cable, the CAC 2, as we did two years ago, if they have any advice on people that would like to serve, who could represent Fairfield, that we have the right to appoint. We don't have to appoint a member of this board. We have the ability to appoint a member. So, when I get that name, I'll bring it forward to you.
Just as a.
Any questions on number four?
Well, I had a quick follow-up. Just, did you also communicate with the Fair TV Commission?
To the, to the chair, the, there's a new chair about to be elected. And so, I am waiting for that new chair to be elected to repeat the conversation with the new chair. Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, well, I guess the only thing that I wondered, and I get what you're trying to do with putting everything under the same, the number four. But the town charter very specifically states that for the Board of Health, Parks and Rec, and SES, it has to be a board member. So, I would just be concerned if you have Board or Public in four and all those under it, that it would then lead, it would kind of go against what the town charter says. So, maybe we should just do five, just having the CAC 2, since that's kind of, that's unique. And then maybe make five, six, or something like that, just to fit it in so that it's not, there was confusion.
Okay, I was just trying to keep voting with non-voting.
No, no, I totally get that, but I just. But I just think it does open the door to then someone saying, "Well theoretically, a member of the public could be on Parks and Rec," and it does specifically state it has to be a member of the Board.
Okay.
So...
Correct. So you'll work on that wording?
Yes.
Yeah. Clarification on that. So the Cable Advisory Council is what you're saying we have a seat on, but if we look at the Member Committee Liaison, it's called a Fair TV Board Member. Are they one and the same?
Yes.
Or is this... But the way I read this, this oversees Fair TV.
The groups are different. What we have a right to appoint to is CAC II.
And the Fair TV Board Member is a liaison to Fair TV? That's not this position?
No. We, I think we'd called it Fair TV because that was the language everyone at this table would understand.
Got it, okay.
But it is in fact the CAC II.
So this is CAC II?
Yes.
Yes, same thing.
Trying to understand if it's one and the same.
Yep.
Thank you.
And as soon as we adopt that, who knows, they might change their name to something else, who knows? Any other questions of Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli? That's item three. Number four?
I'd love to vote on this right now, but I'll wait for the next one. I don't think I need to...
Please do.
I think we need to do a little more with that, you know, the PAL and principal kind of reminders, but that was just a catching a spelling mistake.
You couldn't resist?
Couldn't resist.
Okay. Any questions on number four? Number five is not a formal recommendation, but a concept. Could you explain what your purpose is?
Right. I had said at the organizational meeting that I wanted to look at public comment. You know, I talked at the CAPE Conference quite a bit with other people about this. And quite frankly, ultimately, the notion of trying to forward an entire body of language or to try to do changes, I really didn't feel comfortable doing it as a body of one. And that I preferred it to be more of a discussion and, you know, to take a little bit more research time, pull together what other districts are doing, and to come together with a suggestion. I still absolutely respect the intent of what we had tried before. I still think that we accomplished a lot of good with the previous amendment. But I am hoping, I can't believe we're talking about ad hoc committees again or something of that nature, but asking the Chair if this might be something that's considered so that we don't have to hammer this out at the table. Because the one thing that I definitely anticipated is that any language I brought forward, the amendment process at the table would proceed to be extensive and time-consuming. And I had thought if three members could work on this apart from that and bring forward a recommendation, that that might help improve this.
Does that mean you want to speak? Okay, please.
I'd love to volunteer for this if you're going to go forward with it.
Thank you.
So, there's no reason why three people can't get together to chat about this, and other Board members could join them. Whenever three people get together to do business, you will have to notice the meetings and FOI and all the rest. So please make sure that, assuming that you're idea, so you're there for leading it, make sure you do that with Ms. Brown. And I would suggest that other Board members, I am sure, have an interest in this. But be careful that when you go to a meeting, if you choose to go to a meeting, that you go there to listen, or that only one other person engages in conversation, so we don't trip the other FOI requirement when five Board members start talking about an idea. And certainly, anybody that has an idea as to how this ought to be worded, send it to Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on item number five? Okay. Thank you very much. And again, this will be on the January agenda. And as a parenthetical... And I'm sure the discussion will go as quick.
Yep.
Well, maybe not. Approval of the minutes. The recommended motion for the November 17th minutes are that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the November 17th, 2015 organizational meeting. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, Mrs. Gerber. So, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, we don't normally have had any comments from the two motioners, so any comments from the Board? I know that some... But not to the organizational meeting, correct? There's no amendment to the organizational meeting that was sent in advance?
No.
Any questions from the Board? I see no questions from the Board. Then I'll call for the approval. All in favor that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the November 17th, 2015 organizational meeting? Please raise your hands. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. So for the regular meeting of November 17th, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the November 17th, 2015 regular meeting. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli. Now here, we do have suggested amendments. I think, Mrs. Lou McCormick, you sent yours in first. So why don't we, why don't we deal with yours, and then we can deal with Mr. Llewellyn's? So, and take these one at a time for action. Thank you.
Okay. The motion for amendment, there are two fairly minor ones. They're related to page six of the minutes. So if you look at the bottom of the top paragraph...
Just make a motion and second it?
Yeah, you need to put the motion on the table first.
I'll make a motion to amend and add, following, this is on page six, at the bottom of the top paragraph, after the words are being considered, "Will there be Lucy Caukens or Orton Gillingham oriented programs?" Question mark. Inserted there.
And is there a second? Mr. Llewellyn? So now advance your argument.
No, I was just trying to direct people to where the amendment was before. It wasn't an argument. I was just trying to tell people it's at page six.
No, what I mean is, your rationale for wanting to make the amendment?
Oh. The reason is, is because, I was just being very specific. My question was actually fairly specific. Were we considering Lucy Caukens or Orton Gillingham? And so it was very specific. So not only was I wondering what instructional materials are being considered, but specifically, were we considering Lucy Caukens or Orton Gillingham? So I just included those words there, so there was clarity on what I was talking about instead of a very vague reference, because the question was specific.
Other comments from Board members on this particular one? If not, I'll give my standard response, which is probably getting tiring to people. As you know, I've been a less-is-more person in terms of minutes, whereas, following Robert's rules, that is on page 468, in section 48, the minutes should contain mainly a record of what was done at the meeting, not what was said by the members. I will continue to vote against amendments, not because of the specific amendment being suggested on this particular case, but because I think our minutes go into far more detail than is required. I believe that we should be staying with recording our actions and a very limited discussion, especially on items that were not up for a vote. So therefore, I'm not in favor of this for that same reason that I've always given. Mr. Llewellyn?
But I also think that it's very common and best practice to include questions that are asked, and this is actually a question that was asked here. So the minutes should capture questions and answers. So I think that this is actually very additive to the comments that were made.
Yeah. And as we all know, these are, it's two different viewpoints. Neither one is exactly accurate, not... They're both accurate and reasonable, but there are different viewpoints on this question of what should be included. Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
And I'm just going to repeat what I've always said. We had a bylaw amendment which said we're going to have minutes which record the essence of the conversation. The essence of Ms. Lou McCormick's question was, she was wondering what instructional materials are being considered. And I'll also say that the extent of the minutes in covering your comments at that portion of the meeting are extraordinarily long. I think you've got your details in there. First of all, I also went back and looked, and you actually did not say the word "Orton." So in fact, your amendment is flawed. But if we start going every specific name, every specific detail, the essence of your question, if that previous line weren't there, I would say something needs to be added. But she was wondering what instructional materials are being considered. That's the essence of your question. And to go to this level of specific detail, I think we should all then be going back and hunting for every little specific item that we're looking for. It just, this is going above and beyond redundantly.
Thank you. Any other comments from Board members on this amendment? If not...
I think she has a comment.
The... I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Carnell?
You didn't see me.
No, I didn't.
Um, Ms. Maxon Cunnelli, I believe quoted one of our bylaws. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. So, and I think what's, and to the Chairman, I know one of the things that we've discussed is past practice. So maybe the confusion comes down to, are we going to strictly stay to the bylaws? Or are we going to stay to past practice? And I think that's maybe part of why the confusion on these minutes have come up quite a bit. And maybe that's something the Board wants to do. It's not a... You know, maybe that's something the Board wants to, you know, discuss, because it seems to be an interesting topic amongst the Board.
For the past five years, that's true, and then the last two years specifically. Are we ready for a vote? Ms. Pitco?
I just wanted to add something. I know, being new, but having sat in the audience for the past year, I agree with Mrs. Carnell. You're either going to stick to the bylaws, you're going to stick to past practice. And if you want the bylaws to be set in stone, then this is something you need to do. And I agree that we're getting very much in detail here. Is every meeting we're going to argue about this? We need to pick one direction.
Pretty much. That's the answer.
Okay. And Ms. Carnell, final comment?
Well, I guess then the question comes down to, why can't we make a decision? Or what is the procedure for the Board to do to make a decision?
Well, it would be through the bylaw process. Yeah. Okay. With no further questions, I'm going to say that the motion as presented, do you want to read it?
The motion is to amend the minutes from November 17th, to add the phrase following, add the phrase on page six, last sentence and first paragraph, following are being considered, new phrase, "Will there be Lucy Caukens or Orton Gillingham oriented programs?"
What's ready for action? All in favor, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Ms. Maxon Cunnelli. It fails three to six. Second request to change. And again, put this forward in the motion, and then you can explain why.
Okay. My motion is to add, or actually edit, on the bottom of page six, after "as is..." Oh, actually, to replace "after as," cross out "is her wishful thinking," to replace "this is my third year of wishful thinking." There you go.
The red phrase, say, "As this is my third year of wishful thinking," you, I think you read or stated something different, so for the Secretary's benefit, can you clarify that?
Right. You could cross out "is her" and replace "this is my third year of."
Did you get that? Okay.
This is not a quote. This is the essence of the discussion.
Is there a second for that? Okay. Mr. Llewellyn? Any further comments you want to make on this requirement, this amendment?
Sure. And the reason I included it is because this was not meant to be something that was new or, it's not a new topic that's being raised. This is the third year of me requesting that we have the Strategic School Profile Report presentation at the first November meeting, as is described in the statute. And there is an open, I guess, discussion that we have as to whether that is actually a requirement or not, based on the activities of the state. And I continue to go back and say, well, even if this current year isn't available on the state, 2011-12, 2012-13, still is available, and we still have not even had those presentations. But I would argue that in other districts, they do not wait for the state. They have the presentation anyway of the Strategic Profile Report that is submitted.
Your advancing argument why this...
Yeah. Why I'm including this.
Right.
Why I'm including... I'm giving the argument as to why I'm including it.
What is your parliamentary question?
I'll let it go.
Okay.
Yeah. So that is why I'm putting this forth, because this is the third time that I have advanced this on that basis. And therefore, I am again doing it. And by excluding that, it implies that this is the first time, I'm just throwing it out. But when actually, I mentioned as part of this, is the essence of it, is that this is my third year of requesting that we have this presentation.
Thank you. Second, do you want to make any comment?
I think that the phrase "wishful thinking" without the modification of the third year doesn't actually make any sense. It's out of context. I think the third year makes it, puts it into context.
Okay. Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, you raised your hand?
Yeah, I would have been in favor of amendment which simply struck the phrase "as is her wishful thinking" and just said, and asked at the topic of a Strategic School Profile, because that was the essence of what she said. But in fact, not only is this not the third year, because that implies you were doing it in three years ago. In fact, I went back and checked. You have brought this topic up in March of 2014, August of 2014, December of 2014, November of 2015, and a few side references as well throughout the District Improvement Plan process. I will be honest with you. So number one, first and foremost, the phrasing of this amendment shouldn't even be considered because it's flat-out wrong. Secondly, I think it would have been better off without the phrase at all. And I would also like this addressed publicly, that what Mrs. Lou McCormick is calling for, what has been stated at this Board table as being requested, has been addressed by an attorney that is a training no one at this table has. It has been addressed by our Chair multiple times. And I would invite anyone in the audience, which is now currently mostly staff, so they probably don't need to do this, but anyone who eventually watches this, go on the website. Go and do a Google search on Connecticut Strategic School Profile. And what you will immediately see is that the only profile available is 2012-2013. I have zero interest in this Board sitting through a presentation on data that old. And what you're talking about other districts doing, I don't even know what you're talking about. And it doesn't belong at this Board table, because it's not the report that we are required by state statute to have as part of a presentation. It's not. What you keep referring to as this report is, as you were instructed by the CAPE Attorney, is a series of data forms. I'm not interested in those data forms. The whole purpose of that Strategic School Report is giving us points of comparisons with other districts. And you are continually calling on the carpet and questioning the decisions of this administration. And I see that you are shaking your head at me, Mrs. Lou McCormick. But in fact, your point has been addressed, readdressed, and readdressed, and it's certainly not the third year of your doing it.
I put at your tables, knowing that this amendment was coming up, the email that I had sent out saying, here's the status of the Strategic School Profile that was sent out November 19th. And on the back of it was the year ago, September 26th, happened to be my birthday, September 26, 2014, the email letter that we got, email that we got from CAPE describing that we were in compliance with the state law, because we have provided the information to the state. The state is revising its report. They've not issued it, so we can't put it on an agenda when they haven't issued it. So this is for your background. I agree with Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, especially from this perspective. Our staff work hard to deliver the programs and services to students, and to do it within the laws of the state. The consistent representation that we are not fulfilling our obligations under state law, I think is doing a disservice to this Board, and especially to our staff. So in addition to, this is more detail than I think is required in minutes, in this particular instance, having our minutes include false statements that just... instance, having our minutes include false statements that just are not backed up by the facts, I think is a bad practice. Mr. Llewellyn, did you start to raise your hand or not?
I did, but I'll defer to...
Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I think that that is misinformation, to say what I've said is misinformation. This public act was in fact, a 2015, right, edit, and it is current. And I have spoken to other districts who, and I understand that you have a different interpretation, and that is fine. However, I have a different interpretation, and I believe that, and this is why I say wishful thinking, I believe that it is in the best interest of our district, that at the start of every school year, that we should review and look in hindsight, not at necessarily our competing districts, but at our own district, and understand how we have progressed from the prior year and prior years, on various critical metrics, as defined within the statute itself. And the statute is very specific, that it wants us to present those items that should have been submitted to the state, the report that we submit to the state. Ah, I am not done.
Point of order, this is, this is a discussion on the amendment to add phrases to minutes, it is not a discussion on the particular...
The strategic school profile. But your advancing argument that you have made at the very beginning of presenting this, do you have any new arguments as to why we should adopt this?
Because I believe that that is what I had intended, and that was the essence of what I was saying.
Okay.
And I could have been technically incorrect in saying the third year of, perhaps it's the second year of, or the sixth time that I have raised it, perhaps that's more technically correct, so I'd be willing to amend that. But the essence of it is, is that this is not the first time that I've made this request. This is, you know, either what we want to say, the second year or the fifth time.
Did you have a comment you wanted to make, or?
I did, I did.
Please do.
And I want to correct a comment that you made, giving your example, if I may, please, for the record. You stated that you had sent out an email in the past. This new law was modified, passed on July 1st, so it is new. Reading from the Cabe Education Law Summary, I'm sorry, I'm going to finish, and then you're more than welcome to speak.
Just turn my hand up, Mr. Llewellyn.
Okay. By law, each local and regional school board must submit to the education commissioner, an annual strategic school profile with certain requirements, required data, and then it goes on, and then it needs report. The difference is, the language has changed, it changed in July, that states that the school board must submit to the commissioner, the annual strategic school report, profile. So, the difference before was, it's got to support the data, they're going to generate, it's going to come back. Whether or not you feel as though that report has been defined or not, it gives examples...
Point of order, I want to repeat what I just said. This is not a debate on...
Mr. Patton? What is your parliamentary question that you wish to address by a point of order?
The point of order is, that this is an amendment regarding one specific phrase, and neither of the arguments that the past two speakers have said have any bearing on the changing of that phrase, which is a time-based thing that has years in it.
Yes, please.
It does not mention the actual strategic school profile, that is the context in the minutes, but that is not the amendment.
That's a fair point to be made. Mrs...
I'm reading from Public Act 15-168, which is referenced in the minutes.
The amendment does not relate to the public act, it relates to the phrase she wishes to add, about third year of wishful thinking.
I was correcting your statement, thank you.
Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli, and, no, Mrs. Gerber was next, and then Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli.
Yeah, I just thought it might be helpful for context, for all of the board members to actually look at the language of the old statute, and the language of the new statute. And you can see that the old statute said, each local and regional board of education shall submit to the commissioner of education, a strategic school profile report for each school under its jurisdiction, and for the school district as a whole. The new language is, annually, each local and regional board of education shall submit to the commissioner of education, a strategic school profile report for each school under its jurisdiction, and for the school district as a whole. That's exactly the same phrase.
So...
If you look at this one here, Mr. Llewellyn, new language, you can see what the new language is. It is simply adding a few additional measures that are now required by school districts. The main meat of this statute has not changed. So what Mrs. Lou McCormick is trying to say about how something new came out, July 1st, is in fact incorrect.
So can I...
It is reaffirmed language.
Please, excuse me, can I please validate both Mr. Calabrese's and Mr. Patton's comment that the discussion has to be on the amendment, which is, as this is my third year of wishful thinking, not on the argument we've had over the strategic school profile. Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli, I think you were next?
Uh, no, I'll...
Comments on the amendment?
No.
Any other comments on the amendment? Mrs. Gerber?
Well, also, just to clarify, Mrs. Lou McCormick did in fact say, third year, in verbatim, I mean, it's not the essence, she did in fact say, it's my third year of wishful thinking, as part of the transcript, on November 17th. So just want to clarify.
There's no further discussion on this amendment? All in favor, all in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Mrs. Pitco, Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli abstained, and one abstention, Ms. Carnell. The motion fails. Thank you. Mr. Llewellyn, I think you're, you have two. Please bring them forward, one at a time.
I would like to move to amend a comment on page three. It states that Mr. Dwyer asked if the intent was to define functional capacity, and Mr. Llewellyn said no, and I would like to amend that to say, and Mr. Llewellyn said, when looking at the Cabe article about declining enrollment across the entire state, in all but 16 towns, we have seen declining population within our own school system, we should not be drawing a hard cut at 90 percent. No, I'm not trying to define functional capacity at all, that is outside the scope of what we're being asked to do here.
Are you putting that in the form of a motion, that what is in red?
Correct.
To add that after the word, and Mr. Llewellyn?
Correct.
Is there a second? Mrs. Lou McCormick? Any comment that you wish to make to advance the rationale?
I think that the fact that there's been declining enrollment has been recurring, was recurring throughout the conversation, the fact that we were referencing, I referenced a Cabe article that had just recently come out, I think was important. I also think the fact that we shouldn't be drawing a hard line at 90 percent actually puts in perspective what was in the minutes above at 91 percent. Frankly, I think at this point, you know, there's kind of the comment, we should probably just move this thing to a vote. If people want to comment, feel free, but let's not debate this thing extensively.
Fair enough. Any comments? Okay, all in favor of this amendment, which is to add...
Can you just read it again? That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it's to amend page three, approval of redistricting guidelines, from, Mr. Dwyer asked if the intent was to define functional capacity, and Mr. Llewellyn said no. To, Mr. Dwyer asked if the intent was to define functional capacity, and Mr. Llewellyn said, when looking at Cabe article about declining enrollment across the entire state, in all but 16 towns, and we have seen declining population within our own school system, we should not be drawing a hard cut at 90 percent. No, I am not trying to define functional capacity at all, that is outside the slope of what we are talking about here.
We'll, we'll assume that that actually says scope.
Okay, I'm just, I'm reading it verbatim.
Thank you for picking that up.
Uh, Ms. Carnell, do you understand the motion? Okay.
Maybe we should leave it as slow.
So, all in favor of this amendment to the minutes, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Mrs. Pitco, and Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli, that motion fails three to six. Mr. Llewellyn, you have a final amendment. Mr. Llewellyn, you have a final amendment?
I do have a final amendment, sorry. On page seven, I would like to amend the comment. Mr. Llewellyn said he received a number of calls regarding i-ready, and that parents are receiving different information. He felt that results should be shared with parents, and the district should provide a presentation on this.
You're reading it slightly different than what's here, so...
I'm going to insert, that was the original, and I'm inserting, he felt that the results from student profile reports that provide fair amount of detail, as well as matrices of how students fall both within and outside the district, should be shared with parents. So the insert is, from student profile reports that provide fair amount of detail, as well as matrices of how students fall both within and outside the district.
And do I understand that you're deleting some words, but they're not shown here?
I don't think so.
He felt that results should be shared is a complete sentence, so this is an insert, there's no deletion.
That's correct.
Just clarifying.
That's correct.
Are you putting that in the form of a motion?
I thought I did.
Okay. Is there a second? Mrs. Lou McCormick? Any further comment that you wish to make on, on this?
Sure, I mean, you know, I don't want to, once again, I don't want to get into a long debate here, the rationale here is that parents have been asking a lot of questions about this. There was a presentation given out at the PTA, but that was not generally available. Some of us don't actually have access to Infinite Campus. And one of the points is that the numbers that are provided on our district report don't necessarily tie with the wider numbers at a national level, I don't believe, but I'm not sure, because I haven't seen the data, but that's what parents are saying. So the students fall both within and outside the district. I think that that, that was the key of, that was the essence of what I was actually saying. To share the wider report tells people how they're doing at a national level as well.
Thank you. Don't see anybody else raising their hand. Shall we proceed to vote? Everybody understand the amendment that's in front of us? Now, yes? Okay, all in favor of the amendment, as shown with the red words being added, as shown, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, and Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli, that amendment fails. The superintendent, as he's walking up...
No report.
Has no report. Any committee or liaison reports that are needed? Ms. Pitco? It depends on, if you've got 30 seconds, then make a 30-second report.
Uh, so this is...
Let's find a new pattern, that we don't have to extend meetings.
I'm sorry.
What?
Procedural, do we need to vote on this?
Yeah, we didn't vote on the minutes.
Oh, that's, hey, thank you very much, Mr. Llewellyn. So we're back to the main motion, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the November 17th, 2015 regular meeting.
Wait, Mr. Dwyer? I'm sorry, very quickly, I had warned Ms. Gerber about this, a friendly amendment, page one, second line down, under student reports, after October 23rd, the word went needs to be struck, stricken. They handled the lockdown very well.
Right now, it says, handle the lockdown on October 23rd, went very well. So it's just saying, handle the lockdown on October 23rd, very well. Just take out the word went.
Take out the word went?
Yes.
Is there any objection to that? Is that a unanimous consent friendly amendment? I see the answer is yes, so consider the minutes, the main motion to be accurate with that friendly amendment, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the November 17th, 2015 regular meeting. All in favor, please raise your hand. Your hand's going up or not? No. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli opposed, Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn. Again, passes on a six-three vote. Committee, 30 seconds.
This is from the SEPTA committee, that I serve on the liaison. There's two things. Tomorrow night, on the ninth, at 7:30 at Fairfield-Little High School in the cafeteria, SEPTA and the PTA Council's cosponsoring Connecticut Core Standards, to anyone who wants to attend. And then Friday, December 18th, and the Board of Ed lobby here, they're having the SEPTA Cookie Walk, between 9:30 to noon. You can come and purchase a box of cookie for $12, or two for 20.
Thank you. Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli, did I see your hand go up for 30 seconds?
Yes, very quickly, I was going, I didn't know that Ms. Pitco was going to say that. Again, the event is cosponsored by SEPTA and PTA Council, again, the Connecticut Core Standard Workshop, refreshments, and babysitting. The second thing, I just wanted to update everybody regarding policy, we did get the policy audit back, and the general gist from Ms. Parks to myself is, there's a lot to look at. So we have added more meetings than the general Board of Ed regular meetings for next year to handle the work that's going to be before us as a result of that audit.
Any other committee or liaison reports that need to be given? Nobody raising their hand. On open board comment, I would only make this comment, is that the grievance at the current time is likely to be scheduled for the first January meeting, so you should adjust your calendars to think of a 6 o'clock start time. And again, we won't know until later whether this is going to be required, but at least put it into your calendars. And the list of committee assignments, as well as the list of dates, are at your table, so those have been handed out. Any other person that has a, a comment within the next two minutes? Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I would like to ask the chair and the board to commit, to consider reinstating a curriculum committee, because I think that's one of the, I think, very important functions that a Board of Ed...
That's done by bylaw, so if you want to advance that, then you'd have to do it through a bylaw change. The committee structure is established in our bylaws.
I thought the chair can just point that, I think, isn't the curriculum committee one of the kind of standard committees that's typically not stated within a bylaw?
It is not part of our, please read your bylaws, it is not part of our standing committees, hasn't been for four years.
So this would be a bylaw amendment, too?
Yes, as I said, this would be a bylaw change. Anybody else? Mr. Patton?
Dr. Tyler will probably agree to this, although I didn't see you there, you must have been there somewhere. The Thanksgiving Fairfield-Little, and Fairfield-Ward football game, went with my daughter, she's a freshman, first time, amazing attendance, I couldn't believe how many people from the town come out for this thing. I've never been out of my house Thanksgiving morning really before in the last 10 years, and it was a great game, Ward won, I get to vote, because that's my team on my side of town, so it's okay. And it was a great, great time, and everybody should come to, I'll be going to more school versus school games after this, great time.
Mrs. Gerber wants to say something in the last 45 seconds?
Uh, yeah, I just, I'm not sure if people have seen this, but it's been in the local paper and online, but we had a number of students at Little Low and Ward sign letters of intent to play at different universities, and including Longwood, University of Maryland, West Point, UVA, Columbia, Mercyhurst, Lemoine, Merrimack, George Washington, Wolford College, Cornell, UConn, Quinnipiac, Southern Connecticut, Con College, Stone Hill, and Adelphi. And these are athletes between the two different high schools, all playing different sports, so, very exciting.
Thank you. And my last open board comment is, enjoy the holidays coming up. It's 11 o'clock, so the meeting adjourns by virtue of our bylaws. Thank you very much.